I know, sometimes it can be a little tricky. Couple of seconds? Alright, alright. Good morning, we're gonna call the July 21st, 2020 Scott County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, appreciate that. Once again, we are full strength here, we have Commissioner Ulrich via Skype. We've got our masks to go in and out of the building. I've got Big League Chew up here, I'm not sure if that has to do with social distancing, but it's mighty tasty nonetheless. So we are loaded for bear, we're socially distanced out here, we're taking the necessary precautions. Item number two, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Otherwise, that will stand as distributed. How about item number three, approve the minutes of July 7th, 2020 county board meeting. Are there any changes, additions, deletions to those minutes as distributed?
Chair, I'll move the minutes as they were presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Otherwise, we will look to Deb for our roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Wuckman-Reckie.
Aye.
Commissioner Wolf.
Aye.
Commissioner Beard.
Aye.
Commissioner Beer.
Aye.
Commissioner Ulrich.
Aye.
Alright, minutes are approved. Item number four, high point of the day is when we take some time to recognize interested citizens. I believe we have some folks in person, but I also just wanna mention that in these weird times, we are always available via email, phone calls, any one of us, if you wanna get ahold of us, or we always have somebody posted at the door if somebody wants to show up. So this is a time where people can come and address the board for five minutes on a topic, and we have listening ears for whatever it is you would like to say. So if you'd like to approach, yep, go ahead, come on up to the microphone so we can, you know, we're trying to drive viewership, so you'll get a little notoriety.
Deb, I think they have a handout for us too, if that could...
Oh.
Thank you.
And I typically, just to keep things moving, will have a five-minute timer, and I'll give you the one minute when you got one minute left, just to kinda give you an idea.
I have a handout, first of all, do you mind terribly if I keep my Dr. Fauci signature mask just broke?
Oh.
I know.
We're gonna move you over, just to make sure that microphone gets ya.
Sure, okay, I see, yes, of course. Would you please, thank you, yeah, thank you so much. So we have a handout. I, Jim Peterson, introduce myself, Jim Peterson with the Renaissance Festival. You're very kind to indulge me today.
Thank you.
Five minutes, short speech, I'm not good at short speeches, I think it took me five minutes to put my mask on. But I know the handout is not as much fun as Robert Wagner's handouts, but you'll have to put up with me today, thank you. So a couple of things, I'd like to do two things, in my five minutes. I would like to both inform a little bit, give you some information, and then I'd like a little support perhaps, or make the request. We have done a couple of things, so just, this pertains to the opening of the Renaissance Festival, and what we might do to precipitate that, or activate that. We are, we would be a departure currently from the policy, but we think that it's a fairly, it's a fairly well-understood and approved concept that an outdoor, fresh air, socially spaced environment is significantly better than an indoor confined space. And so, you'll hear, we'll talk about this in just one moment. The first thing we've done to accommodate this new COVID-19, or the new virus, is we changed our opening dates to Labor Day. So we've moved the festival back two weekends in hopes of having dialogue with whomever about this opening of our show. The, you know, we, so we have to show what we're doing to mitigate it. We have protocols in place which we think are adequate. We, of course, read what everyone reads, and perhaps a bit more, because we read things that pertain to our industry, and our industry is full of people doing their very best to accommodate mitigation policies. So we're, one of the first things we did was be introspective and ask ourselves whether or not we could comfortably and successfully put on the festival. And after reading and going through this process, we are, we have a very high comfort level that if we in fact can, put on the Minnesota Renaissance Festival this year. We think it would be an interest, we think it would be good, we think it would be an opportunity for Minnesotans to get out and celebrate. I think people have been stuck at home too long. And then, there's a sort of a fairness issue that we're weighing. We look at Mall of America, that has 50,000 people permitted every day in a confined space with narrow aisles, breathing that air as opposed to, and that's 50,000 people, as opposed to seven, we're requesting, our 50% capacity would be about 17,000 people. And that, again, is over 25 acres with a lot of breezy, fresh air to enjoy. So, you know, that's our point, I guess, and so that's the information we're trying to give, or for the most part. And then along with that, we've included in your package our press release talking about the very fact that we are opening later. And then, in addition to that, we've written a letter to you outlining some of the concerns, and hopefully some of the solutions. Along with that, we have given, we've written a letter to you specifically, and then we've included in a, in a more colorful way our Who We Are kit, so that talks about the nonprofit organizations locally. We're very parochial in our approach, we try to keep the money we spend in Scott County whenever possible. And we, and we try to be that outreach vehicle for people trying to raise money. So, we involve ourselves as frequently as possible with that kind of activity. So, at the end of the day, I guess, we're trying to support the, probably upwards to 500 craftspeople, and probably 500 entertainers that receive compensation or receive an opportunity to sell their goods in the environment of the festival. Those people will have problems. We personally will have problems if we have to go an entire year without generating any income whatsoever. So, and we don't see, again, we're just asking to be treated like everyone else in a certain fairness. Fairness is not a word frequently used, maybe in procedures, but we're sort of using it because we think it applies. We think, we would, we think if you looked at our environment as compared to the environments that, of various places that we are all probably familiar with, our environment is significantly better. We have no, really, no indoor spaces, it's all outdoor. We have 25 acres, I realize I'm being redundant, but 25 acres, and that sort of captures the argument and what we're trying to do. And if we are compared or contrasted with those other opportunities for people to patronize out in the, out in the community, we think we look favorably in that comparison. So, again, if I made it under five minutes...
You, I'm giving you a little grace there.
Thanks so much.
Yep.
In summation, we'd like a break, we'd like some support from you. We think we are good corporate citizens, we think we've been, we've been helpful to the community. We engaged at one point in the, in the bridge, the Bloomington Ferry Bridge at one point, where we gave a quarter of each of our tickets to that. We helped with the improvement on 41 and 169. So we've actually contributed money to the county in terms of some of their projects, as well as supported the nonprofit organizations in town, and as well as contributing to all the people with whom we work, the 500 craftsmen, and the 500 entertainers, and all of the people that associate with us. More than that, we don't think, if you, if you could support our request to help us open, we think we are complimentary to the process and to the goal of let's getting, let's get Minnesota functioning again. So, thanks for your time, I probably exceeded my five minutes, but you're kind to put up with me. And, thanks, and if you have any questions, obviously, I'm more than delighted to answer them, talk about it. So, thanks again, you're very good to do this.
Well, thank you for coming before us, and I would just say, this is the time where we, we're here from citizens, and it's awesome to do that.
Sure.
I'm just gonna make a quick note that this reminds me a lot of the, kinda the Prior Lake kinda situation, had some situat, you know, some items, you know, we don't necessarily take action...
Yes.
...as part of this, but I think this board has sort of shown that a willingness to support people to do their thing.
Yes.
Businesses, and certainly doesn't make people go to those businesses.
Yes.
So, no, I appreciate you coming forward and making this known.
I just, thank you, Mr. Chair. So you said you're gonna delay opening for two weeks?
Yes, thank you.
And extend the show for two weeks on...
Probably will, we'll play it by ear, but we think that would be the plan, yes. That whatever is compatible with the season, if it's snowing...
Don't say that.
Seven weekends after we opened on Labor Day, would, probably wouldn't have as glorious a last weekend, but yes.
Okay.
That would be the intent.
And then, the Trail of Terror, is that something...
Trail of Terror is a problem that I'm gonna take another five minutes and two weeks to talk about. I don't wanna overwhelm you with topics.
And can I ask, Mr. Pierce?
Sure.
What, so what are you hearing from your vendors? Do they wanna open, or...
All of our vendors are wildly anxious to come, and because they're so dependent upon the festival for their income. If they don't generate income for their, whatever they make, pottery, or clothing, or jewelry, if they don't generate income from that activity, and from appearing and being present at the Renaissance Festival, they have all sorts of difficulties financially, as is apparent, I mean, you just, they will be without income. And, not, so they're clamoring to come, and they're all very excited to come, and we're every day having to stand up and say, "Not yet, not yet", we're waiting for the brilliance of Scott County to respond favorably to our opening. And so, without, you know, we know you will, and that's what we're waiting for.
Well, unless you guys are hiding something from me, there's no magic wand back there, is there?
No.
Is there a magic wand that we have as a county?
No.
I've been told there is, so...
Well, if you can find it, I would love... I can't tell you how much I would love to get my hands on that, if you know that there is one. Cause I don't think it was the county that's necessarily saying yes or no.
Well, we have wizards, witches...
I know you do, that's why I thought maybe you would find it.
We have available all of those things, and we'll make them available to you, we're not gonna hold back.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just gonna follow up on that, we really appreciate Jim and your company, that you're working with the state on this, the Minnesota Department of Health, and that's where the decision will be made. And just even from paging through this now, your plan has really evolved over the past couple of weeks. I assume it's through those conversations. So, I just wanna make sure that all our 11, did we decide that 11 viewers?
Well, we might be up to 12 by this time.
That they hear that also, that that's the, that's the decision maker, and that, and that you are working really hard with them, and you have that.
We are.
So that's great.
We think we are, we are not only working hard, we think we have a fairly compelling argument, and we would like to, you know, present it and have it supported, and you would be that, one of those political bodies that could perhaps support our, you know, our position on this. And if you would consider that, we would very much appreciate it. If you could sign a letter, or a resolution, or something to that effect, saying, "Yeah, we would very much like the Renaissance Festival to open, and sign it, and provide it to me, or whomever", that would be very helpful, and I would appreciate it. I realize, you guys are smart about politics, and I'm not, but the process is such that you are not directly involved in helping with that decision, other than you can, you are who you are, you represent your community, and you can speak for your community, and I think the community can speak. And many of our Facebook entries and so forth, the community has spoken. They definitely and dearly want this festival to open for all the reasons we've talked about. And more importantly, or not more importantly, but somewhat importantly, is they don't see a conflict. They look around, and they see all of the various things that are open, are conducting business, they're, they're day-to-day, every day open, and they don't see a problem with having us open, particularly in light of the fact that we are outside, we are fresh air. Social spacing is not an issue, cause we have 25 acres to space and socially space yourself. So we think, in a strange way, the Renaissance Festival is the perfect activity, if there is one, for the COVID virus to exist in, because we can deal with it, and we're confident we can.
Well, I would just say, keep us in the loop on what you find, cause as you mentioned, that this plan is involved, I haven't seen it before this, so keep us in the loop, and...
Yeah. And as you would predict, I'm certainly available for, you know, questions, or phone calls, or a meeting, and I'm very available, so thanks so much, and I'm sure I'm way beyond my five minutes, but you're very...
We don't see a line behind us, so...
You're very kind to put up with me, so thank you. And if you, if these, if the inserts, or what I've given you, generate any questions, if you just do nothing but read the cover page, that'd be helpful, and then call me, I'm very available.
Awesome.
Thanks again.
Thank you so much, appreciate it, thank you for availing yourself to this forum.
Yeah, thank you, Jim.
I'm just gonna look and make sure there's no one out in the hallway that wants to jump in on this portion. I don't see any, so, alright, that concludes item number four. Let's move to item number five, this is the consent agenda. I'm gonna read through a list of items, these have been thoroughly vetted by staff and worked through, and they will typically pass in one motion. So let me just read through 5.1, approve the reappointment of Gene Gramling, of Commissioner District 2, to an at-large position on the Personnel Board of Appeals. 5.2, approve the mobile clinic COVID-19 testing plan on a reimbursable basis for the State Emergency Operations Center and Minnesota Department of Health. Five, oh, I'm sorry, that, that 5.2 has been amended to move from 350,000 to 360,000, looking to Deb, I'm getting the nod of recognition, so that has been changed, but we're just gonna pass it still on this consent agenda. And we all have that document on the desk here. Does that cover that? Alright, thank you. 5.3, adopt resolution number 2020-106, authorizing entering into agreement number 1044268 with the State and Minnesota Department of Transportation designating a portion of County Highway 8 as a trunk highway, 282 detour route in 2021. Can't wait. 5.4, adopt resolution number 2020-107, acknowledging receipt and acceptance of gifts to Scott County. 5.5, set a public hearing date of August 18th, 2020, at 10:30 a.m. to consider adoption of Scott County Public Health Nuisance Ordinance Number 31, excuse me. 5.6, set a public hearing date of August 18th, 2020, at 10:30 a.m. to consider amendments to the Scott County Subsurface Sewage Treatment Systems, or the SSTS, Ordinance Number 4. 5.7, set a public hearing date of September 9th, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. at the Jackson Town Hall to consider the turnback of Mobile Manor Drive in Jackson Township. 5.8, approve the request to grant a 60-day extension to Crescent Curve LLC, who's the applicant and property owner, to record the final plat of Crescent Curve located in Section 34 of Credit River Township. 5.9, approve payroll process of personnel actions. 5.10, adopt resolution number 2020-108, authorizing the submittal of the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security, or CARES, the Act grant application for $108,479.69 to the Minnesota Secretary of State in order to receive CARES Act funding to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus pandemic for the 2020 elections cycle. Should be fun. 5.11, adopt resolution number 2020-109, requesting approval of the basic sale price, approval of land, private land sale to adjacent landowners, and establish the date of the private sale of a tax-forfeited parcel of property. 5.12, approve amendment number 2 to the contract with Goosebusters Inc. in the amount of 122,000 to increase capacity for COVID-19 testing. And 5.13, approve record of dispersments and approve claims. Those are the items on consent, with 5.2 being amended. Are there any, any items you would like polled, any, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I will move approval of those 13 items on consent.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Otherwise, I will look to Deb for a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Wuckman-Reckie.
Aye.
Commissioner Wolf.
Aye.
Commissioner Beard.
Aye.
Commissioner Beer.
Aye.
Commissioner Ulrich.
Is he off mute? Could've lost him.
Aye.
There we go.
Sorry.
No, I get it. Alright, so those items are passed. Let's move on to item number 6.1, where we're gonna provide direction for preliminary use of Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security, or CARES, Act funding. See Lisa making her way.
Good morning.
Good morning. I think Chris will be doing us...
There she is.
Alright, so, we're here today to update you and confirm that we captured the discussion that we had at the workshop on July 7th correctly, as we move forward with the CARES funding. So, we're gonna start out with just a brief overview. The Coronavirus Relief and Economic Security Act was passed by Congress on March 27th, and it provides over 2 trillion in economic relief to the American people for public health and economic impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. The CARES Act provides for assistance to American workers, families, businesses, and it's intended to preserve jobs for American industries. There is a specific section in that very large act that focuses in on local governments, and it establishes 100 billion, 150 billion in coronavirus relief nationwide to go to state, local, and tribal governments to assist with COVID-19 outbreak. The CARES Act has specific criteria about how those funding that's distributed to local governments should be used. In the state of Minnesota, two counties received this funding directly, Hennepin and Ramsey County. The rest of the counties received, are receiving funding, and cities are receiving funding through a governor's executive order that was sent to the Legislative Advisory Committee on June 25th, and has since become completed. 841,464, well, wait, 841,464,000 were, are to be distributed statewide to local governments. 55% of it is going to the counties throughout the state, 45% is being distributed through a couple of different mechanisms to cities and towns. There was also in that executive order, some additional money that was distributed statewide for food bank support, and food shelf and transportation support. Scott County received 17.7 million of these funds, and then, some of the funding was distributed directly to our cities and townships.
We're gonna make this interactive.
Yeah, so Mr. Chair, Lisa, so that money is actually in Scott County bank account now, the stuff that hasn't been distributed, the cities and townships?
It's not in our bank account yet, but it will be shortly.
Okay.
So, we have to go through a couple of procedures with the state, but it will come to Scott County, and then we have to document how we're gonna spend it, and then if we don't spend it by a certain date, it will need to be sent back to the state.
Sure, I just wondered when we would actually have physical control of it.
The distribution is July 29th.
July 29th, thank you.
But it's gonna be in chunks, right? We're not gonna get it all in one chunk? It's gonna be like three or four checks, is that...
I think our distribution of our funds is July 29th.
So we'll get the, we'll get the big, okay.
And will we be responsible for distributing to the cities and townships, then?
No, they will receive...
They'll receive theirs directly, okay.
All of Scott County cities and townships were large enough that they receive a direct distribution. One of the nuances with it is that the cities and towns must expend their funds by November 15th, and if they don't spend all of their funds that have been appropriated to them, then the county will have an opportunity over about the next 15 days to see if we have additional liabilities that are appropriate to use those funds for.
So Lisa, the townships do have to apply, though, for the funds?
Correct.
They don't get the money.
We had to fill out an application, so we need to confirm with the townships. Now, I forwarded to several townships information on that, that it requested it, but we probably need to make sure the townships are aware, they have to fill out an application for the funds.
So just to make sure that got picked up, cause I don't, I don't know if you have a microphone back there, do you?
No.
Townships must apply for these funds, in case, but we've been, yeah, communicating with them, but it probably stands to mention again. And Lisa, before you move on, do you know what the special assessment, or probably wrong word, was for the food shelves, and you mentioned in the...
The extra money that went to, through that executive order, were 6 million each, to each of those areas. 6 million for food bank support, and 6 million for food...
Okay.
Food shelf and transportation support.
Okay.
And that was statewide.
Yep.
So it's distributed through a variety of nonprofits that are providing those services.
And, and do we know of that, how much, if any, entered Scott County food banks and transportation supports?
Certainly, they received some indirectly through like Second Harvest Food Bank, and, and some of those suppliers, but how much exactly, we don't know for sure.
And they didn't get a direct...
No.
Direct, okay, thank you, that's good for us to know.
Yeah, yeah, cause that, right, cause that'll be part of the discussion. Alright, thank you for that.
Okay. With all of these funds, whether it be the counties or the cities, we have to comply with federal reporting requirements and audit requirements in the use of these funds as we move forward. One of the things is that, as we mentioned, the cities and towns receive money directly. About 9.4 million have gone to our cities, with Shakopee being the largest recipient. Our townships also receive direct allocations that they need to apply for, totaling $884,000. All of these funds, just like the county, should be used for COVID-related expenses, either through assistance to their businesses, or direct expenses that the cities and towns have incurred as a result of COVID-19. One of the things, there's, I think we're missing a slide, maybe we decided not to do that slide? Okay.
We did.
So at our workshop on, on July 7th, we discussed a variety of focus areas on how we should spend that money, and we received your direction, and the focus today is to make sure that we capture that right, so that we're directing our staffs and the various groups that we're working with to spend the money in the right manner. We have some principles that we talked through with you at that meeting, and you helped us refine, focusing on how we should distribute this money out into the community. We really wanna focus on ways to get people back to work. If they're working, the feeling is they can take care of their own personal needs, so that was one of the kind of overriding objectives. The focus of this funding should be to really fill gaps in those areas where people are not receiving relief through some of the other programs, like the Payment Protection Program, the unemployment, and the stimulus programs. We wanna help businesses that are most harmed by the pandemic, and we really wanna focus in on ways that we can help sustain the county's economy, and work with those businesses that, due to the pandemic, need to make some operational changes in their business models. And, and that really was something that we heard pretty loud and clear from you. We wanna provide direct support to businesses so that they can sustain and continue to grow the county's economy. We, we also heard from you that we've, it's important that we provide food support for families in the short term to help them get over the hump due to unemployment, or a variety of other conditions, and that we should target mortgage programs and prevent loss of homes and apartments, and that we should also continue to try to support distance learning efforts and childcare for essential workers. Those were kind of the overriding principles.
Can I pipe in on one thing? The school space is actually an area where we have learned more since we were here on July 7th. And I think all, all school districts have documented unreimbursed needs, so we're gonna talk about that in one of the upcoming slides, but we have better documentation today about their needs than we did on July 7th.
So, just to kind of as a reminder, recap, to qualify for this funding, the expenses must satisfy some elements. It must be a necessary expenditure that's needed to respond to this public health emergency. It can be a primary expenditure, direct response type of thing, or it can be dealing with those secondary impacts, such as the economic impacts of the stay-at-home orders and a variety of other things that have happened with business interruptions due to COVID. They need to be costs that were not accounted for previously in a budget. So if they weren't part of an approved budget as of March 27th, when the Act was approved... So, if they weren't part of an approved budget as of March 27th, when the act was approved, then those kinds of costs can be brought in for this. And they need to be incurred during a covered period, which has basically been defined by the state through the executive order from March 1st to December 1st, 2020. So, we need to do those expenditures before that.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask something quick? So, the cities got 40, cities, townships, 45%, counties 50. How much did the schools get?
The schools got funding, each specific school, we don't have that documentation about what they received. I know Leslie's been in discussions with them, but they received money directly from the state for their needs, and so it came down through a different avenue, not through this particular legislation.
So, how, do we know approximately how much somebody would have got?
Yeah, Lisa.
Do you have that?
I actually do have that for the school districts.
Okay.
So, they got money early on in the very onset of the COVID response to help with like that immediate distance learning technology. So, Bell Plain received a total of a little over $95,000. Jordan had $129,000. New Prague had $158,000. Prior Lake Savage had $432,000. Shakopee got just, just over $967,000. So, that was for that startup technology need.
Yep.
And, and the guidelines for them were much like our guidelines. They had to be used for setting up distance learning. It could be used to replace or pay for salaries that were already being paid for. So, it was the extraordinary costs that were associated with it. So, at our workshop that we had a couple of weeks ago, we talked about a variety of ways to focus the community funding, and we had, we ended up with four buckets that the board wants to support, and so we'll walk through each one of those. Was business support, food insecurity, food security, nonprofits and schools to help with some of those unexpended or unreimbursed expenses that the schools had yet have been identified now. Housing security for the community, and then some additional investment in rural broadband. At that meeting, we also come up with kind of targets for each of those expenditure buckets. I keep hitting the wrong button here.
What we know is true, as Hennepin and Ramsey have moved through this, is that they did those target funding levels, and they've had to move as needs change or as different aid packages come down through the state or the feds, they've had to adjust that, and so we'll have to have a little understanding about that.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. As I was listening to one of these discussions yesterday, online forum, if Congress extends that unemployment insurance, I mean, that's, that's been a significant, I think, had a significant impact on the ability people to sit at home and not miss a house payment or not miss the rent. If they do, they're not paying attention. If that continues, then, for instance, our support to people who can't make house payments or make rent might change.
Yes.
And so, then, I think the focus would be more on, just my thoughts, maybe sustaining small businesses who are about to close the doors, and those kind of rents for commercial property or things like that. You triggered that response, Christine, when you talked about being able to adjust on the fly here as, as situations change and as we become aware where the need might, might morph, the, the intensity of the need might morph.
Yes, on the fly and under your direction.
Yes, it has been, it has been quite fluid even since we met. The state has come up with some more money toward, that's being focused towards rental assistance, and so as we've been moving through this, we know that we will have to make adjustments along the way as other programs start emerging. So, with the business support, this is where we received a strong direction from you to focus things, because this is, this is really the building block to get people back working. And so, we're going to be working with the CDA and using consultant assistance to set up a business assistance program. We're going to try to do it kind of under one or two different types of applications, and the focus would be on those businesses that are really hardest hit and probably least reimbursed by some of those other types of programs. To date, we've identified that the grants would be used for income loss, PPE, retooling of those businesses, and some of the businesses that probably have been not as well supported through some of those other programs are like our daycare programs, the licensed daycares. We have 297 in the county, and they've had a number of losses due to COVID and some additional requirements. Farm and ag businesses, we're still really digging into this, but we know that a number of them have had some substantial losses as a result of it. There's 740 farms in the county, so we're working on trying to refine this a little bit better. Our small business community is another one that's been hard hit. We have just under 3,000 businesses with 20 employees or less. We have just, just under 3,300 businesses that have 50 employees or less, so these are kind of really the bread and butter of our employers here, or of our, you know, labor force where they work here in Scott County. So, keeping them healthy is important. The other thing, too, that we've identified and has been an issue in other counties, particularly, Ramsey County did a focus in this, is to deal with sole proprietors. They have been left out of some of the PPP programs, and so we're trying to develop a program that will target and help those folks as well.
Question, a couple of questions.
Yeah, Mr. Chair and Lisa, thank you. And I'm, I know people are sick of me saying this, but I'm going to be a broken record again on, on this. I think we need to be really clear that there's something between there, too. I mean, there's businesses who aren't sole proprietors, but they have three owners, and they're not counted in some of these, so I really hope that our criteria is as flexible as possible, and we need to be careful about defining things by number of employees. I know many, and this is true of small businesses, they tend to have different setups where either there's owners who aren't employees, and it's not a sole proprietorship, they have, they utilize independent contractors, even in many of our smaller construction businesses with the, the subs. So, I'm very, I, I really hope that our eligibility just deals with small businesses in Scott County, no matter what their makeup of employees, owners, independent contractors, that's, that's really important to me. I have been talking to some farmers, and, and there have been several, and, and I know you're looking into this, several programs that have come straight from feds to farmers through FSA and, and the commodity organizations and commodity groups. So, again, we, we need to use our criteria about not doubling up, and, and those, I think those programs are a little more complicated than even I know about, and they're very particular to different commodities, so it'll be important to know that and, and to help then those who got missed. I think that's really been our, our message here. So, thanks for indulging me on that, and, and just really that flexibility is important to me. The other thing that I've seen with some other programs is eligibility about, for example, being in business for a year, which I understand that, but I think somebody who started a business in October or November or December of 2019, oh my gosh, this was their worst possible storm, and if they're still somehow in business right now, I think they're worth a look, because that means they have something or they've made investment to keep going through what possibly was the hardest time of all. So, thanks for letting me keep repeating myself.
No, I appreciate your comments and, and the team that's working on this. I think we've talked about all of those points that you've made, and we're trying to very, to work very hard to make sure that we're not over-criteria-ing it to exclude some of those businesses, and I think your, your points from the workshop were, were heard by the group working on that.
Thank you.
So, hopefully, as we move forward to, and bring forward, those programs will have captured that.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
I have a question, if I could.
Yep.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we hear you. Commissioner Alr.
Okay, I'm sorry, I have a question about Next Stage. Is there any concern that they will get overwhelmed with work, that, you know, this money has to be spent within a very narrow timeframe, and, and what happens if Next Stage gets so backed up they can't deal with all the applications? Do we have any concern about that? Do they have the capacity to meet, meet this demand in the short time period?
They are, so far, conversations with them is that they've been very confident that they'll be able to appropriately staff to manage it. They're, they're kind of winding down on the work that they've been doing for Hennepin County. They've learned a lot from that, and our program obviously is much smaller than what Hennepin County's focus was in this area. So, I, I'm pretty confident that we'll be able to move forward with them without having a, a staffing issue.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just the, a couple of observations to kind of illustrate to the public who may be listening at home how complicated this gets. For one is the census tract that involves Prior Lake has the highest percentage of tax returns that come via 1099s and not W-2s. It's one of the wealthiest tax, or census tracts in, in the state, but the majority of the, of those tax returns are people who are independently employed, self-employed contractors. They don't have W-2s to work off of, so that's going to complicate things as we try to figure out how we spread this around if we can. Next Stage, for those that are listening at home, Next Stage is not the next stage of what we do next, it's the name of a contractor that we use, so we don't have to go out and hire 50 CPAs to administer a program to assist small businesses. It's a company that actually does this already for a living, has done very, a very good job, I'm told, for Hennepin and Ramsey, and we, as Scott County, are going to retain their services to help be the contact point where anybody who wants to participate in a program like this can, can route their application, and the vetting is done there. Related to those whole discussions, though, I got, I'm going to admit to some discomfort in the government taking taxpayer dollars or money that Washington basically printed out of thin air and handed to us and said, "Go forth and help blunt the effects of the pandemic." First of all, just to reiterate a principle that these businesses are not struggling because they've done business poorly or because a market has changed. These businesses are struggling because the WHO, World Health Organization, said, "There's a pandemic." The United States government responded by saying, "There's a pandemic," and by closing down large segments of the society, of society and of business. So, this is nothing that the businesses have gone out and done on their own. They're reacting to a government mandate. And so, I have to set aside some of my discomfort, realize that as a representative of government, we did this to them, and so we're doing awkward things to try to make sure that a bunch of them, as many as we can help, not go under, don't go under, and there have been millions that have gone under already. But I just want to reiterate how complicated this is, because we're, we're, when you use the word income loss here in your slide, grants for income loss, I just want to make sure that we understand what that means, because in business, we're talking about top-line revenue, that's one thing, gross income is another, taxable income is yet another, and then, of course, there's the owner's draw that comes out of there if you're an S corp or an LLC. And what are we reimbursing here? You know, this is kind of a rhetorical question, but if a company has successfully been bringing, say, 11% of its revenue to the bottom line in income, I don't think we're interested in reimbursing that, but in covering their commercial rent, their insurance, key employees on the payroll, things like that, I just want to be sure that's kind of what we're talking about, that we, we protect the core of that business, so when this epidemic is over after the election, everybody gets back to business, they've got a structure to actually get back into competing for business.
Yeah, and, and your points are very well taken. Actually, income loss is one of those things where it's more of a qualifying criteria rather than a reimbursable, and that's one of the things with certain types of businesses where we are struggling with how to structure the program, because the program's really set up and the guidance at the federal level is set up to deal with the things that you described, paying for rent, dealing with keeping employees on their payroll that maybe they could have laid off, to deal with expenses to retrofit their buildings so that, or, or their space so that they can open back up or, or launch their business in a different way that is a little bit more safe for people to patronize or to be employed in that location. So, those are the kinds of expenses that are eligible. The criteria for, for looking at whether our business can even qualify for this program looks at whether they had income loss from a previous time period.
Income loss. Now, again, you're talking about revenue loss or profit loss? You're talking revenue, just so we're clear, okay.
Revenue, yeah.
Yeah.
And tho, those things are, have been pretty well vetted.
Good, okay.
Through, through the process.
Mr. Chair, I assumed they had, I just wanted to have that, the light shining on this, what we're doing here.
Well, I think it's important, you know, both ends of this, we've talked about, we want to make sure that people are getting help that maybe have not gotten, not maybe, that have not gotten help. There's a lot of different weird, not weird, just different ways to organize a business. We, we've talked about not wanting to double dip. I mean, there's this weird paradox, it's the world's going to hell in a handbasket, but, oh my goodness, there's digital dollars being delivered like crazy. So, well, wait, what, which one is it? Well, it's both. So, I think we need to constantly say, "Hey, we want to help people that haven't gotten help," as opposed to double dipping for people that already have, so I think that'll probably be a common theme and.
Related, related to this, Mr. Chairman, as we were having the scaled delivery meeting yesterday, we were hearing that the cities, almost every city in the county is putting up 100 or 200,000 for small grants to Main Street businesses to try to keep the doors open and try to preserve their downtown corridors, and so Stacy Craig's from Scott County CDA was talking about how we coordinate that so that we, we, if, the need is so great and the dollars, believe it or not, are not going to go far, they're going to be consumed in a hurry, and so I think every city agreed that they were going to do a lottery program, and so otherwise, you're going to have the mayor walking up down Main Street saying, "I want this one to get a grant, and I want that one to get a grant," and they can't do that, so I gotta hand it to them. But they're going to do a lottery program, and it's just going to be the luck of the draw, and then those people will be, those names will be forwarded to the CDA so that they don't get a double, double lucky or something like that. You see how weird this gets?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I was going to say, Commissioner, you know, sitting in that, that meeting yesterday, I think Prior Lake and Savage are actually coordinating with the CDA.
Okay, just the two.
It appeared that Shakopee was doing its own program for, for their reasons, and potentially Jordan, but the others, I do believe, Elko was in a different boat just because of the amount of dollars they got, and most of it were going to their cost, but they're actually partnering with the CDA and the county, and so it would be a coordinated effort, which I think was Stacy's point, was the coordination would help in the dollars going the furthest and then to the most beneficial, and, you know, she was talking via lottery, too, once they were deemed eligible. So, you, you are right, when you take a look at this amount of businesses, it does not go very far.
Yep, take that number and times $10,000, yeah, they, it's not, it's a little bit to go a long ways, and it doesn't seem like it when you look at the big number at the top.
Yeah, and I think clearly one of the things that we've talked with, with the CDA and Next Stage, because we're working together as a team on this, is that, you know, if they've already been reimbursed for that expense, they won't be reimbursed under this program, and that'll be part of the vetting process. Okay, the next area that we heard from you that you want to focus is in housing security, and the goal of this program is really to prevent people from losing their homes or their apartments that, as a result of COVID-19, through job loss or maybe a health issue or whatever. As we've been diving into this a little bit further, one thing that happened a couple of weeks ago is that the state, through the CHAPS program, released $100 million last week for rental assistance. So, that's really getting at some of that rental assistance needs. There'll be about 2.7 million that are going to both Carver There'll be about $2.7 million that are going to both Carver and Scott County through that program if they're successful. It's competitive, so they have to apply for it. But right now, that's what they're going to be doing. And so we think that a large part of that rental assistance need will be taken care of by that particular program. So we're kind of hanging back as to where we go with rental assistance until we see what transpires with that. We've been talking with the CDA, and the CDA is going to work with us to help put together a mortgage assistance program. The needs are pretty great out there. There's about 31,000 homes with mortgages in Scott County. Nationwide, we're hearing that 8% of the homes are in forbearance right now. And that would translate to about 2,480 homes here in Scott County. And the median payment on a mortgage is about $1,900 a month. So we're looking for a program that, over a three-month time period, would maybe reimburse folks up to about $6,000. So that's where we're headed with that program. And that's where probably most of the focus here in this $2 million will go, is into that mortgage assistance program to keep people in their homes and keep them from tracking into foreclosure. We also have talked about supplementing the hotel voucher program for homeless folks. And we heard pretty loud and clear from you at the workshop that you wanted that to be focused on, folks that have maybe experienced homelessness as a result of COVID, not kind of to go back and deal with our existing homeless in the county. So we're continuing to try to figure out what the need is in that area. I don't think we have a good handle on that yet, but we're continuing to try to work through that.
This is one where I'd like to hear and make sure we capture this right. We thought we heard a very strong message from you of preventing people due to COVID from losing their apartment or their home. It wasn't to solve current issues, but to prevent additional issues. And I want to make sure in this one, because this is one that's had a lot of discussion, that we captured out of the workshop, your direction on this.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for that, Leslie. I agree, and I think that's really important just for consistency, consistency, there we go. I mean, the purpose of these dollars, these dollars are given to us for that purpose. Second, you know, because we're not helping businesses who are maybe struggling anyways. We shouldn't, we need to be consistent across the board there. So for homeless issues or families moving forward issues, if there were costs and greater need because of COVID that are directly related to COVID, I think that's appropriate. And then I want to go back to rental assistance. I did hear, I was out at several townships last week and just ran into different people who are landlords, who have one and two units around the county. And they all talked about not getting paid by their tenants. And, you know, of course, they haven't been able to evict, and so there's a big need there. So I don't want to lose that. I know there's some additional funding. But I kind of, at least from what I know about that program, I think not everybody's going to be eligible for that one. So I hope we leave some bucket there and talk to these folks, because these are just regular Scott County folks, dependent on that income from their renters who haven't been getting it. And sometimes maybe those renters are low-income folks, but sometimes they're maybe they're not. And that's even more appropriate for our dollars, because they're probably not paying because of COVID-related, you know, job losses, things like that. So I think we need to be careful and cognizant of Commissioner Beard's comment earlier about, well, folks who were getting the unemployment and the $600 bump, they still should have been paying their rent. But, you know, maybe there's other situations there. So I agree with the bulk on mortgage assistance and preventing foreclosure there. But I still hope we leave some bucket there and continue to look to what this other money is going to do.
Okay.
Related to that, Mr. Chair, two weeks ago, Commissioner Ulrich made, I thought, a very insightful comment about landlords. And that maybe the targeted rent assistance would be better conveyed if a renter said, "Look, I can't make my rent," that the check was cut to the landlord and not to the tenant. If we can encourage you to look into that, see how that works.
Typically, that's, as I understand, the way these programs, the existing programs set up and the way we would, if we do consider a program, the way we would structure it, that the payment goes to the landlord.
Thank you.
In the RBA, we clearly called out, because you made a point that, two weeks ago, identified landlords who have not received payments. How do we score this issue? So it was clearly called out and caught out of that last year.
You know, that might have the effect of making landlords our allies in this. If they're having tenants who are struggling, if they could work with us on this, that might be...
Well, we do know, because we've kind of done a little checking, that about 50 of our renters are, it's in the courts right now where they're, once the eviction notice gets lifted, that these landlords may move forward with evictions. So we do have at least 50 families that are at risk right now that may qualify for the existing programs or this program that's coming down through the state.
And I believe there's many more, because the landlords I know haven't actually started those proceedings in court just because they're like, "Well, let's see how long." They're kind of thinking the eviction moratorium may be extended, so they're like, "I'm just not going to do it quite yet." So I think that's a good starting number, but I think it's higher than that.
Okay, that's very good to know.
And so, Mr. Chair, just, so then, we would, if there's homeowners that aren't making mortgages, we would bypass them and give the money to the bank or whoever wants the mortgage, that type of thing?
Same thing.
Same thing. As you have pointed out, it's very complicated work. And our housing people right now are trying to map out, how do we set up a program for those low-income families that may need rental assistance, those mid-range people who might need either rent or mortgage? And then there's going to be some middle-income folks that are going to need help with mortgage. And how do we put together a kind of a continuum of that? So we're looking at how many households fall into each of those categories from an income standpoint. I think our housing people are really approaching it the way that you suggested, Commissioner Brecky, about just looking at how do we make sure we don't create gaps in the criteria that we're building? So it's complicated and they're working hard.
Well, I mean, this is incredibly bizarre, because, you know, anecdotally, on one hand, people are, there are, I don't think anyone disputes this, there are a lot of people making way more money sitting on the couch than they did working. Right?
That's a fact, yep.
So I, yeah, I don't think that's disputed. So we've got this money, you know, some say it's going to go fast, some say, you know, "Wow, if we're not double dipping, it might be hard to get rid of." If somebody's making more money staying at home or whatever, and they're not paying their bills, would they then be able to collect potentially this money to pay those bills that should have been paid? I mean, to, I mean, that's kind of the, because there's always special circumstances, always. There's nothing that just fits in a box anymore, probably never was. But if we're going to make this money go further and try to help people that maybe have not gotten help, if people are making more money and choosing not to pay those bills, they should not then be able to double dip, in my opinion, on this money.
So one of the questions on this application will be, what other assistance have you received? So we can then start to prioritize. And, you know, maybe the person who got the extra $600 a month, maybe there's a reason for that, that, I don't know. Like, we'll have to sort through that. But our priority is going to be to look at those people who have not received funding from some other place or received some funding, but their needs continue to be, to be in...
In excess of the funding that they did receive.
And you're going to do all that without having to spend a ton on administration, because that's getting into the weeds. So, yeah, I mean, I understand, this is, this is difficult. We do thank you and understand that balance.
And one of the things that we're learning through this discussion is that it's probably going to cost us a little bit more because of the challenges associated with the housing piece to do the administration side.
So in talking with Julie Seeger for quite a while last night, she does have ways to look at some of the concerns you have by the amount of money they've taken in, whether it's unemployment or assistance. She's probably going to need us to provide either a temp or one of our analysts or planners. It might be that we ask scale, could we use somebody like Jesse for a while to do this? And, because this is a scale issue, right? But instead of having to hire somebody or put out additional dollars, since we're already funding that, to make that a priority. So she does believe through providing an analyst or a planner or somebody that can review and scan documents for them, that they can get at some of those concerns without additional costs. But she is worried. I mean, this forbearance issue, it's the first time I've heard her talk about it. Danny mentioned it this week, that there's some leading signs in the things he's doing that does begin to raise concerns about mortgages. And so as that number continues to increase and at the levels it was doing, I think that she has a bit more concern about mortgages. But this is one the CDA does do, and I think has a vision for how that would move forward and they would capture that.
And would it be true, then, if we use existing staff for that, but they're not able to do their regular jobs, that they're eligible for our reimbursement of direct costs?
Yep, it would be for CARES funding, so it would be a salary that could be consumed for that if, you know, if we were to do it something. But I think this is a scale issue, right? All the cities are impacted, all of them are going to have some beneficiaries. And it's not like it's going to go on for years. But for a month or so or whenever the application period is to help scan and go through, is this something worth investing in with that salary anyway? You know, at some point, we have to say, "This is the priority, all of us." And if it is, it's probably a benefit from that salary to just use it for that.
Is it hitting where you wanted us to be? Okay.
Yeah, you're just allowing us to make our editorial comments.
Okay.
Well, I mean, we started out with, this is a preliminary, we're trying to fine-tune this. And it's, and you also mentioned it's fluid, because this whole thing has been fluid. You say something, and 30 seconds later, and it's, yeah, today, tomorrow, wow, that's an eternity. One minute an hour goes by. We all feel the weight of, okay, this money, there's this flurry of money. You know, how does it get delivered correctly to the back of the taxpayer, which is where, well, did it come from there? Did it come from digital, a whole other conversation? But ultimately, the taxpayers have to flip the bill. So making sure that we are being good stewards of that is super important. I think you're hearing that loud and clear. And I know you guys feel the same way, it's just, yikes.
And Commissioner, for the public, we tried to call this out, right? That we're looking for direction. Did we get it? Businesses the priority, saving people from becoming homeless was your second priority. And then these dollars are flexible depending on the identified need, once the programs are identified and moving forward. So to Commissioner Beer's point, even the one up there about NextStage, that program will be set up with your criteria. So if it's rent, if it's paying employees, if it's cost to revamp your businesses, as Commissioner Brecky, those are the types of things we can look for and then fund out of that. It's not, everybody's going to get the same, right? This isn't a fairness-type discussion that we're in here. It's true costs and people that have been harmed, is what we've heard you say over and over again. But the criteria are very high-level and the direction provided you. And then we'll work with other servicers to develop these criteria, right? But it's flexible. It could shift based on what we learn moving forward. And we've tried to say that as well as we can to the public.
Right, and part of that is funding sources come and go, or it seemed like they come and come, to make sure that we're not... You know, we might not double dip and all of a sudden, boom, wow, you got, so that's where I, part of me thinks that this potentially could be hard to give this money away, if we're truly saying not double dip. But that might come up later.
Just want to point out something in this category, that if we were to give half a month's rent, or mortgage payment, half a month's mortgage payment to the number of houses there, we would need, we wouldn't have enough money. We would exceed $2 million just to give all those houses, all those mortgages. $1,000 would, you know, would be, I'd look at $2.4 million. So it's not a lot of money for the need, the potential need that's there.
Right, and it's just, so many buckets keep coming, though. That's the, if we knew that that was the finite number, but it just never seems like we have a finite number. The state has a number, DC has different numbers. That's my only point, is these things are, like, they're not coming and going, they're coming and coming. To make sure we spread it out as best we can and be in good stewards of that, that's my only point on that. And also, I don't want to reinforce bad behavior, I'll also say that. But that's my point of, if somebody's making more money and chooses not to pay, in my opinion, priority bills, like your rent and mortgage, like, I don't want to reinforce that. So how do you factor that in? Knowing that there are also circumstances, I get that. But inside the bell-shaped curve, that 66% or whatever, that, man, you're making more money, you chose not to pay the right bills, sorry, this ain't for you. Like, how do we also administer that with grace? But that's tough love, which is also love, I've said before.
So that was a part of the conversation that Leslie had with Julie Seeger late yesterday. And one of the pieces she talked about, in addition to looking at what other assistance have you received related to COVID, is the potential of looking at what kind of, what kind of assets do you have? Like, have, if people have a lot of assets and aren't paying their mortgage, then maybe they need to make some different choices, right?
Yeah.
They do.
So the great thing about NextStage is that they have provided really important technical assistance about CARES, like eligible expenses and not. And they have said, and we will set up the program the way that your county wishes it to run. So I think we've really appreciated both those pieces of their work.
Okay, moving on to the next bucket, I think we kind of finished the housing piece. The next bucket that we heard you say you wanted to focus some of this funding was in food security, nonprofits, and schools. And we heard a lot through reaching out to the various food shelves about some of their needs. And I think this is an area where there is some need. They need to be buying food, they also need some equipment to deal with the demand, and they need PPE to help with their distribution. So that's an area where we think some of the funding should be focused. We also have heard about some of the needs that the nonprofits in the county have. This is kind of a sampling of the nonprofits, New Options, MRCI, River Valley Medical. All of those have been having different types of needs throughout the course of this pandemic and are potentially in need of some support to get through and continue to provide services. The one last piece, and maybe Chris has some additional information, but we did reach out to all the schools. We got a handle on kind of those areas where they have had costs that exceed what they were reimbursed for. They tend to be primarily in providing daycare for those essential workers that they were deemed responsible for doing. And then there's also some distance learning costs that exceeded what they were reimbursed for. So those are areas where they've identified some potential concerns. So we would assume that all of the costs that we identify from those types of things would come out of this bucket. Is there anything else?
No, I think you did a nice job. We'll vet those requests as well. But, so we have collected information from them, we haven't sorted through who received money for why yet, and we'll do that.
So one quick question on that that comes to mind. So as a family, we try to exercise personal generosity, we don't own anything, we manage. So assets, money, whatever it is. So when I get asked, "Hey, will you support X, Y, and Z?" or whatever, I say, "Well, how much of this dollar goes to the field or goes to the need versus administrative?" Whether it's a phone call or whatever, "Well, you know, 80% goes to the field." Oh, that's pretty good. There's also places that 80% goes to administration, so 20% hits the field or less. So my question is, how do we ensure that whatever dollar goes, that, you know, 80% is semi-arbitrary, but to me, that's a good number, that that dollar goes to the people in need, not just salaries and all the stuff that goes with it? To get that dollar, then it trickles down to a dime, hits the field.
I'll tell you what, we've already been in those conversations about what is a fair and reasonable administrative fee and knowing that that does take money off the street, right? If we pay that, then it's not going to pay somebody's mortgage. And so we are looking at that very critically, and we will include that in any contracts that come before you that I think you should hold. And we will include that in any contracts that come before you that, that I think you, you should hold us responsible for negotiating a fair um admin fee.
Yeah, and I, I'm not saying, you hear me, I'm not saying it, it costs, I get it, it costs to get it out, but golly, when it. And I'm not, I know there's some names on here, I'm not suggesting that, that those names are doing that, I'm just. Um that's just kind of my editorial on that. And I also just, ah, the schools gives me a little heartburn because I know they have already had funding. And will likely have more funding, I just want to make sure we're careful with that, I'm seeing a head shake. And I know we're doing our due diligence, that's all I'm talking about is making sure we're.
Yeah, we've, we've had conversations, so they were mandated like for the essential workers, which some are our staff. Other people within the community, there's no funding for that, and every one of them identified that as an issue. This is another one, though, that if we invest in it, helps the overall taxpayers throughout the community in some ways. The other thing is the distance learning, trying to work with Perry in some of these areas. Is some of these dollars recommitted back to that or to help with the kids with the distance learning? Because except for one district, none of them received what some of their costs were in there. So they've all documented from Prior Lake to Shakopee to New Prague, especially the essential learning. Costs in the hundreds of thousands of dollars for that, for the essential daycare.
You know, Mr. Chair, I'm um. Choking on this, but uh having been on the funding debate on the other side of the river. Schools are the largest single portion of our budget now. And you know, there, there is a constitutional obligation for the legislature to create and fund a general and uniform uh system of public education. To lay that on the taxpayers, well, there is a provision for school boards to do a local levy to do that. To step it over to several other layers of government where we have specific obligations. The citizens of Scott County to accomplish the administrative role of the state. With welfare, licensing, records, uh all that stuff that we do. And we lay that on the property tax as well. To step into this arena, oh boy, I'm, I'd say caution, caution. Uh even though these are dollars coming from Washington and they're, you can argue about the, the genesis of those dollars. Nonetheless, I'm, you know, it's like when the government steps in, the federal government steps in and says six hundred dollars a week unemployment for everybody. And it ends in July, well, every one of us that have ever done that knows it doesn't end in July because we created now a new expectation. My fear is if we start monkeying around, shoveling or routing money into things that school districts are responsible for. We're creating an expectation and a precedent that it's going to be harder to say no to and differentiate those tax dollars going forward. I know this is complicated and I'm probably not doing a very good job of explaining, but just know that I think we should go real slow on this. Providing infrastructure like for the, the wifi hotspots and things like that, that's one thing. We already have invested in that and previous administration, this administration have done a good job of building. A, a very effective internet system uh for the citizens of the county, can use for anything. And the school districts benefit from that, God bless them, I'm glad we can do that. But for us to start routing dollars here that don't actually directly touch uh shelter. For instance, very basic things, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not enthusiastic about that.
I, I hear you, it's just going through what local governments could utilize it for, and that is one of the things identified is.
That way we could. Yeah, I mean, it just, again, super bizarre, super bizarre times, but I just, scope creep is always a, on the radar and. Or funding creep, or you know, which is sort of what I, I see that as, it's not um. Yeah, I mean, I think it's good that we talk about these things, have these types of discussions. Um and, and without fear and no shame, which I definitely don't fear either or feel either of those. I think it's important to talk about it, though.
I, I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Beard, and I think they're right on, especially when we're talking about day to day business. But I do feel like if we can look at this with the same lens we are at the, because. Schools were listed along with businesses with, along with homeowners as this given to us to give out to these places if COVID related. So I think that if we're really, really using that lens to say, schools had this COVID related costs that they got no other money from. Again, it's a consistency issue to me, and that's part of the purpose of these dollars. These dollars weren't given, I mean, as much as we wanted them to be, these dollars weren't given to us to run the county and our day to day operations and have a better levy next year. We tried that, we, we checked that out because we thought that would be great, not for us personally, but for taxpayers of the county. No, we went back to these dollars, whether if we were sitting in Congress. I, I think we all of us might have had a different view on how this worked or if these dollars should even go or, you know, however, wherever they came from, thin air. But now that they're here, this is a legitimate purpose. And I, I really would advocate that we have that same consistency as long as it's COVID related, as long as it's. Not been covered anywhere else. And I think already we've said this is a smaller bucket, keeping to our buckets too. Our biggest bucket is businesses, our second biggest bucket is, is people's homes, rent and mortgage. Then schools are part of this smaller bucket that includes some other people too. Again, just my opinion on this one.
Did she just tip her hand, um Congress future? I don't know, that may have been, I'm not sure, I may have been ready to that.
Everybody knows I've, I've only stated, I've, my world is narrowed way more down to Scott County than ever. I don't even look at what's going on across the river in Carver, those crazy folks.
Hey, there are cousins, why didn't you say about that?
Second cousin.
Truly cousins, truly.
Right, right, right.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to change the subject just a little bit and come at this from, it just, this is just a heartfelt expression. It's, take it for what it's worth, but so I'm looking at this screen, uh the nonprofits in particular. The faith community is represented in there twi- uh kind of twice when I look at Esperanza and Heart Ministries. Maybe some other, no, I'm not seeing others. Let me just tell you a brief story about um how the faith community touched Mike and Karen Beard a lot of years ago. When we were a young, struggling family of four little kids and the winter came and my job slowed way down and I was behind three house payments. Three house payments and I um, an elder from our church came and said, the rumor is you might be struggling with a house payment, can we help? They not only made those three house payments, they made the late payments and everything and brought us current. He said, this is what we do. And uh, boy, talk about blown away, had the impact that had on our lives, that we were important to somebody. Somebody cared for us and was watching out for us, even though I never asked for help. We just figured, well, when, when business picked up in the spring, maybe we could catch up or something would happen. It was a very hard time and at a very, very hard, dark time in our lives, uh our local congregation stepped up and bailed us out. They, that's when I learned about something called the benevolence fund. And believe me now, every month when the benevolence basket is passed, that's where the biggest chunk of our tithe goes. Because we want to touch other people's lives the way our lives were touched voluntarily by people knitted together in a common cause of faith and caring for each other. So when I see some of our local faith communities stepping up to be part of things like food, food distribution and, and, and helping and things like that. I hope that there's some way some of these dollars can float to them. Now, it's kind of hard for you to call my church and say, hey, Beard likes your benevolence fund, we want to put a hundred grand in, you can't do that, I get that. But I hope that we're researching and looking for every angle where we can involve the faith community. Where the faith community can be a conduit to refer people to us for this extraordinary help that's uh kind of come in out of left field. It's serendipitous in a way, uh let's use that because here's what you get when you're dealing with your local congregation. They know you, they know your motivation and your heart. And they knew that we weren't going to take that several thousand dollars and run off and make a down payment on a new pickup truck. Or pick up and move out of state or something. They knew we were committed, they were committed to us, they blessed our lives with that kind of help. Oftentimes, as government, I'm afraid, we can't get into that kind of screening. That's one reason I reacted so positively to Commissioner Alrick's suggestion that somehow the check gets made out to the tenant. Or the landlord, the landlord, because I've seen people take their windfall and run off to wherever and do other things. Which leads me to the discussion about FISH, I haven't seen FISH show up on here. And FISH is an organization, a voluntary organization of civic and faith community, civic clubs and faith community. That look for opportunities to touch individual lives that are outside the scope of the third floor here at Scott County. Please tell me that somehow FISH is having some input or FISH is an asset that we can utilize when we're distributing this. Uh these federal dollars that have come to us and how can we utilize that? So that in, it, it's more of an appearance of individuals touching individual lives than it is, Washington sent us a bunch of money and here's your share.
So when we talk about FISH, Commissioner Beard, I think the issue there is, remember, these have to follow a federal audit. And have to be used to receiving some of those dollars. So I think, so I think to Commissioner Alrick's point, when we've talked about FISH, I think they have an ability to help refer and help understand some of the need. I don't believe they would be a direct recipient because of those, some of those types of issues and the ability to do that.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, Leslie.
But it is a good point, I do think that, and I, I think staffs well connected, they will be a wonderful referral source. To these resources because many of our congregations and whether it be their benevolence fund or, or just their operating funds. Are struggling for all kinds of reasons, because people aren't able to go to church, because their parishioners and, and congregation are struggling. So it'll be really important that, that we work with them and in some ways become their arms and feet for people in their congregations. Who are struggling, who also meet our criteria. So, so I think we're, we're working with them and I assume that message has been received too.
Good, outstanding, thanks.
Well, and this might be just a very short sidebar, but we, you know, we always talk about inclusion. And you know, you've heard me talk about, I'm all for inclusion so long as it's inclusion, inclusion, full inclusion, completely inclusive. And to, I mean, maybe this slide points it out a little bit, not just the political inclusion, but faith groups can be included. You know, if we buy Esperanza or whatever, a freezer, that didn't convert a bunch of people, it helped have some food to distribute to the community. And Heart Ministries or whatever, so I just wanted to make sure that, I'm all for being inclusive so long as it's not political inclusion, it's real inclusion. Faith groups include it.
Okay, I see where you're going.
Yeah, sorry, it took me a while to get there, but um, I know, I just, I just, I, 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 there's political inclusion and then there's real inclusion. And that's what, that's what I'm talking about. Again, sidebar, a little off topic, but.
It's good for us to discuss some things.
You know, I, I get separation of church and state, but I think it's, you know, freezer's not going to convert anybody. It's going to help get food out to the.
It's going to be really helpful though.
The masses. Another missing slide, there's a slide gate, Scott County slide gate, we're going to get over twenty.
So um technology, it's a missing from here, so I'm going to just go to this slide, but uh so you um get off that topic.
Well, wait, 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 the technology, that was the towers.
It's the missing slide, it's broadband, and it's uh, you know, right now, uh early on, we worked with Jackson Township. Louisville Township um to work on broadband. Some of those funds will be able to be reimbursed uh with uh this program. I apologize, we somehow deleted the slide, but uh what, what we're working on going forward here is a similar piece. I think we plan to spend about a million, than a million in technology. And um uh there's a number of underserved areas particularly in the rural part of the county. Kind of in the Cedar Lake area, uh around near New Prague, Blakely, um Credit River, New Market Townships. Have gaps in the um their broadband service. And so one of the things that we're doing is um working to try to provide similar types of uh technology improvements. Not um adding fiber, but putting in components that will help um use the existing fiber system that we have. That would be the focus of that particular effort and we're working um in town. And we're hoping to get partnerships with the township, we're out, reaching out to the townships right now. Because that could be an area where they could spend some of their COVID um funding as well. And then uh one of the other things that we're looking at is a, a program where we would uh set up. Kind of a hotspot type of area in, in developments like at Mobile Manor or, or uh Jackson Heights. Where they don't already have um uh technology and that would be available to families. It would be available to students and families could purchase at reduced cost um that technology. So those are a couple of the areas that we're, we're uh developing uh the technology program. And it's really focused on that um distance learning um uh component. But it also can help with businesses and um telemedicine and other needs that uh without that access to, to broadband. Is a problem for uh folks out in the rural area. So that's the other area where you had uh supported at the workshop that we uh continue to emphasize. I apologize about no slide.
So I just want to make sure, in the RBA, again, this is one where you said you do want to require a local contribution to the county contribution. As well as any provider commitment, so private, so the public-private partnership as we work through the procurement for this and being able to do it quickly. And that is probably true. A place like Blakely, though, is going to struggle when you get a ten thousand dollar allocation and they have a several hundred thousand dollar commitment. So I'm hoping, and Perry is having discussions, that some of the townships might actually from other areas even utilize some of their dollars in those. He has, I believe, appointments with um five or six of the townships already to go out and meet with them at their town board meetings and talk through this with them. But we do want that requirement like we had before. I'm not sure we're going to achieve a third, a third, a third from all of the communities, let's go back to the old co-op days or something like that. But um we do want a three-way partnership between the private sector, the county and the townships to move this forward.
I, I agree, but I think again, that flexibility, because you're right, when you have only, you know, four hundred and twenty-eight residents, your tax base is a little bit smaller. And, and when you have geography that is no fault of the people who live there that make things more expensive. I don't think we can stick to that third, a third, a third, but I think some contribution from each area is important. Again, with the whole thought that we're extending a resource we already have there, we're not creating. At least in, in huge part, some big new resource, so that's my thought on it.
Well, I think this kind of talks to what Commissioner Beard was talking about, the hotspots for the schools. This was the whole premise of extending our infrastructure in a different form. In March or whenever that was, for the, for those three, I think it was, was it three and then four finally went? And then, so now we have this opportunity to, so the schools kind of backdoor their way in to these hotspots, the towers. Um or whatever, if it's an onsite box at Mobile Manor or whatever.
It's a stadium, as I think Perry or um Access would talk about, it's kind of a stadium construction. Then it allows them an E rate of about twenty dollars a month, which is the E rate to the splash page for their school. And allows them access for learning. And so there's two things going on, there's the tower construction in some of these areas where we have to get towers to. With some backhaul to our fiber. It's using our fiber ring, but there is some backhaul to connect these. And then the second program is the stadium construction in some areas like Valley Green, um some places in Shakopee, Savage, even Prior Lake. To get access for these kids at an E rate to their um, their splash page for their schools. As well as then for telemedicine or families could sign up for other purposes at a little bit higher rate. The commitment, my understanding, is for five years at that type of a rate as part of the agreement to enter into this um with the vendor that we're talking through. But right now, we have to even document that procurement to make sure that we have the timelines and we can do this by December first to make sure it's installed.
Because the other ones were sort of pad ready or, or.
Correct, it was adding to the existing kind of towers, yep.
So this, this in, you know, not in a really backdoor, but does directly benefit schools and distance learning. And, and it really creates a valuable infrastructure in our fiber.
And for businesses.
It does, absolutely.
It really does for businesses and for people working at home, I mean.
All right, so partnership is still key, we just want to make sure we're capturing these when we're moving forward with the criteria.
I think so.
Okay, um kind of uh to recap our discussion at the, at the workshop, we had talked about um this funding, the seventeen point seven million dollars. Is also um eligible for internal um uses. And uh we went through our expenses at the county and we've actually documented that we're probably going to have about at least five point four as a minimum. That are really clearly um meet the criteria to cover those COVID related expenses and salaries. And uh we're also. And uh, we're also in the process right now of going through uh, the Governance Committee of evaluating some of the internal requests for technology um, process, uh, various equipment that are really due to COVID and, and trying to assess, you know, where they are on the spectrum and how important they are for us to move forward with and whether they're doable in this timeframe. And so we'll be coming forward with recommended projects and contracts as a result of that process. At this point, we're holding another 1.6 million or so in reserve. That could be either invested in additional community needs depending on uh, what our um, outreach um, determines. Or it could be used to potentially offset some additional salary costs that the county has. And as you well know, the guidance that we have from the US Treasury uh, is a little bit conflicting as to what things can be used on, in our salaries for um, uh, these uh, funds. And so we're, we're hoping for more clarity as, as uh, time goes on to determine how much of those funds can legitimately be used uh, for our internal expenses. So with that, um, I know you've had a lot of discussion along the way, but if uh, we have some additional direction or discussion that we want, uh, this is the time to do it.
Thank you for letting us interject because I'd forget at the end and thank you for doing this. I mean, it is complicated, it is hard, and I know you have um, more than full-time other jobs and duties you're dealing with too. So I really appreciate the thoughtfulness and the work staff's put into this and um, and listening and gathering all this information.
Ditto's.
I think Chris and Lisa have put a lot of time in, Barb Doll, Danielle, Carrie, um, you know, Danny, they've done a lot of research and trying to look into this and begin to identify these needs. And they have done it beyond their normal duties and so just kudos to them. They've done a great job in trying to research and understand.
Okay, I, I gotta get my broken record comment. So I was on a White House call last week, you know, we get these White House calls, um, seem like Fast and Furious. And I know I would really love to buy down the, I'm getting some looks, to buy down the levy to give everyone a tax break, right? But one of the things is you can't do future levies or budgets. But on the, and I, they always start out these White House, White House calls that, hey, this is not on the record. You know, this is not on the record, I'm like, ah.
Listening to them.
I know, but, but one of them, one of the comments was part of why they put that stipulation in there that you can't buy down future levies budgets, um, is because they don't want to, the spirit of that, looking at my attorney, attorneys, friends down to the right, of the spirit of that was that they don't want to uh, you have that money used as a bailout for grossly mismanaged jurisdictions, which this is not a grossly misman, mismanaged jurisdiction. So I always go to the spirit of the law, the intent of that guidance. And we're still lacking the clarity even for this or PvP or Idol. I mean, the thing changes as it, as it, as it moves day by day. I would just hate to miss an opportunity to give everybody a tax break by buying down, moving some things forward from the, you know, CIP or whatever it happens to be. I just, I would really like to have more money into that bucket so that everyone gets a piece. I get it's a small piece, but it's something, it's a start, um, that we have our eyes and ears open to that option. That's just my broken record comment on that.
And I'd say I think we are in a very appropriate way because we're making sure our costs are covered. That when we went back to our budget workshop a, a month ago, we were like, we have all these additional costs. We're not going to be, we're going to try not to a 4% levy, which was projected, so we need to cut, 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 cut.
Yup.
Now, at least we're being able to cover those costs, still hopefully pull down our levy, maybe not cut things inappropriately or irresponsibly. So I think we're getting there. I mean, I, I think that's still our, our goal, but I, I don't know. I think this county's always been one to walk the line. We're not going to push, we're not going to push the level of inappropriateness or legality.
Well, I definitely don't want to uh, break any rules, but I'm okay bending a few in the sense of, in the sense of where, what money counts in these buckets for the, for the 5.4 or whatever. I'm not, I'm not saying break any laws, I'm not, you know, you go to your accountant, you go, hey, I want to pay my taxes, but I, you know, I don't want to pay anymore than I have to.
You want to pay our costs, you want to make sure we're paying.
Make, make sure that, you know, because we might walk the line so well that, wow, this dollar, uh, well, let's just leave. No, let's, let's include it, let's include that dollar because the taxpayers benefit. And I know we are having great discussion um, in the workshops today. So please do not take that, you know, I know sometimes whoever happens to be at the desk at you two now that we ask questions and, oh my goodness, wow, these commissioners are really coming at us for what. We're just hungry for truth, we're hungry for discussion, we're trying to get the information um, that we need. So I don't think you guys are taking it that way, but that comment is not intended to like, oh, wow, we're really not doing the, doing our job, but you guys are doing awesome.
So go back to your paper and I think it states that decision pretty clearly that right now there's $7 million in salaries and we're looking at two to two and a half million dollars in those types of investments that were just on the previous slide. Doing some of those capital things that make our business work, that move us forward in this new pandemic, the things that we were investing in, maybe a little differently, but investing. The salary savings there from claiming those salaries does help in some of the things that you're talking about. And it does leave 1.6 million dollars there as we get into this to see where the greatest need is. So we're holding that back pretty much right now to see if we have an overwhelming mortgage issue or small business issue, you could determine that. If you decide you want to do something more internal because we've identified a need for the county operation, you could do that. So I think there is the flexibility you're looking for, trying to balance getting these dollars out to the community to people who are hurting right now, so.
And I will say, thank you for that. And I just saw Danny walk into the hall before this question and answer, so I figured I had to make sure I got my broken record dollar question on the, on the record, so. No, you guys, I mean, this is, this is bizarre, it's bizarre.
I'll take it.
And um, thank you for doing the, the heavy lift.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, fun discussions and crazy times, that's for sure. And, and no one's taking this lightly, no one's taking this lightly and we're trying to go about this the right way. And, and as has been the case all along in this, you can say something today. I'm not even going to say tomorrow, but by this afternoon, it could be something different. And it's from no, um, we're trying to be as transparent as we possibly can. And I, and I think that we have absolutely done that well, so. All right, um, you're not, are we, are you asking for a, no, we're not asking for that. Yep, yep, that's what I wanted to make sure. So let's move on to item number seven, that was such a great discussion, I think, seems like a kind of a hard come down off of this, yeah. All right, so we're going to start with your committee reports, it's got to be fireworks after this. I mean, that was such a great discussion, so uh, committee reports and commissioner updates, Commissioner Wepin-Brecky, please.
All right, uh, let's see, our board meeting was uh, July 7th. After that board meeting, we were all at a workshop on the CARES funding, so um, that was at workshop and then today was the public, the public discussion on that. Also on July 7th, that evening, I attended actually three in-person meetings, Bell Plain Township, Blakely Township and Jackson Township. Most of um, my conversation with the boards there had to do with this CARES funding and, and because we just came out of that workshop and them asking a lot of questions about that. Some questions about, they had heard about our 2021 budget and some of our projected and thought about cuts. And um, you know, of course, I was in the more rural part of the, the district for, for two of those meetings and got some feedback about um, not wanting to cut things like extension and fare, especially they didn't mention historical society so much, but that they feel like those things benefit their, their areas. That's also where I heard about um, several people in the audience and on some boards were landlords and that concern about that, that it's even small landlords who have one or two units are, are seeing some real impact. July 8th had the Scott County Historical Society uh, board meeting, that was a remote meeting. Um, on July 9th, the FISH meeting was a remote meeting, I was signed on then. I think that was a great meeting and I'm sure Commissioner Albrecht will talk about it more, but all the chambers of commercees and mayors and, and we got a lot of really good information about the business communities and what's going on there. July 14th was the ASME Labor Management Meeting, remote meeting. Lots of questions and discussions from our, our employees um, about COVID, about um, just things going on, about our budget, um, and a long discussion about uh, performance evaluation. So, but you know, business still keeps happening, we still have to deal with those, those regular things too. Also on July 14th, I had my monthly meeting with Leslie. And then that evening on July 14th, um, Spring Lake, Prair Lake Orderly Annexation Board. We had two issues in front of us, one was a, a variance on setbacks for a, a unique lot on Spring Lake. And the other was, oh, a dog kennel issue. And uh, both those um, properties were in the Prair Lake Annexation District. So uh, fun, fun, good meeting. July 15th had a call with Angie Whitcomb of the Shakopee Chamber of Commerce about the, the CARES funding. This morning, uh, before our meeting, met with Pam Selvig, her and I touch um, face monthly. Really spent some time and Pam gave me some more information and feedback about those human services waivers we talked a lot about at the meeting two weeks ago and where um, our staff and our programs were seeing efficiencies and where in some places we're not, that sometimes face-to-face is important and those waivers aren't helping. So it's good that we're starting to track that, really watch that to know which ones are going to be the most important for us and which ones, uh, maybe it's a good option. I think we want to up, you know, up our flexibility there, but that's still, it's going to be important when we are able to and when appropriate to have those face-to-face options also. Lot of calls last few weeks, I just think it's interesting and for those um, callers who listen, I want to make sure I acknowledge some of the concerns I've received. You know, I've had a couple of calls with Mr. Peterson from the Renaissance Festival, several calls on, on COVID and I would love to remind our residents for, you know, there's people who think that, you know, that masks should be illegal and we should all be doing whatever we want. And then there's people who are calling us with the very opposite message, that, that they would like um, more prudence and careful, uh, carefulness out there and, and even mandates from different levels of government to help do that. So those calls really did range the gamut, um, some calls on the 16941 road project. I did receive a call from two of our, our families at New Options about the waiver that Pro Act is, is requiring. And I am going to the Pro Act Board Meeting today at 5:00 and, and will follow up on that. I think that's a result we're seeing because of the insurance industry frankly, um, telling all these businesses and organizations that they're not covering based on anything COVID. And so now the businesses and organizations are trying to protect themselves um, from liability with overreaching waivers and, and my friend to my right here and I could go on about waivers and, and what we think about them and how uh, legit we think they are. But that's a really hard thing for our families now who really want to get their, their loved ones back into these programs, but are a little nervous about the waivers they're signing. Not just, you know, like, yes, I understand my, my child, my loved one could get sick or it could be shut down, but that I could be liable for all kinds of payments for other people and things like that. So I'm going to wrestle that out a bit and I think if you hear from any Pro Act, uh, New Options families about that, let's, let's talk and make sure that we can, can help find a, a good resolution there. I think that's all.
I would love to hear more, how you guys fall out on that because that's going to be, that it, not going to be, it is going to be.
For all kinds of.
Yes, yes, I think that's a really important, um, would love to hear more about that. Looking down at my left, Commissioner Beard.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, on the 8th, I was able to uh, um, work with CAP Agency for a $10,000 donation from the Union Pacific Foundation, some folks I've had a long history with from my past life and uh, and they came to me a couple of weeks ago saying, we've not touched Shakopee for a while. Who do you want us to make a grant to? So I was privileged to be part of 10,000 to the food shelf, specifically is where the best, uh, best and most effective need was. On the 9th, the Transportation Alliance held a Zoom meeting with um, key members of the uh, Bonding Committee at the state and uh, one of the congressional members, Congressman Pete Staubert. So I participated in that uh, presentation and Q and A about what's going on. Just a sidebar, I just noticed this uh, early this morning in reading the news, the legislature did pass the police reform last night and promptly adjourned without a bonding bill once again. And um, some of my uh, texting back and forth with some of my colleague, former colleagues is that we'll be back in August and so I'm, I'm sorry to say that apparently they're taking the um, tack that the governor's going to keep this up and they're going to keep it up. And as usual, um, we always thought the bonding bill was like dessert and you don't eat it until you've eaten your broccoli. And so there's apparently more broccoli to be eaten at St. Paul and political side of things, so. No bonding bill yet. Uh, and then of course, yesterday with Scale Service Delivery Meeting, we spent a lot of time talking about uh, what the cities and county were doing and how they coordinate the efforts with the Scott County CDA. Much of the conversation we had here this morning, that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we had the CARES Workshop and in New Market Township on the 7th of July. We had, on the 8th, the Metropolitan Emergency Service Board, um, went through a couple of things and um, one topic towards the end was uh, you know, what kind of happened down in Minneapolis on, you know, with the, the whole riots and all that stuff and what's going to happen there. And I think a, a number of people, including myself, kind of bit our tongues about what were we going to say? Cause some people from the Hennepin County, um, Minneapolis area, you know, are talking about reimagining police and stuff like that, so it's, uh, keep you posted on that. So, and on the 9th, the I-35 Solutions Met, very good meeting there. We had uh, some talk about the Lake Street area, what they're doing on that and uh, and that's coming along pretty good down, uh, down there, so all on schedule. That evening, Alco New Market had their um, bi-monthly meeting, Spring Lake Township had their meeting. Just a couple of permits uh, going on there, uh, some talk about some uh, docs and some things like that, so nothing too crazy. On the 10th, Doug Barons, uh, who I talked to the night before at the Spring Lake Township meeting, he works for uh, the Parks Department there and uh, so Cleary Lake. And they have the new building out there and gave me a tour.
Okay.
And uh, you should all see it, it is very nice, you know, when we talked about how could that building be that much? And it is a very nice building, um, very well done, it's, I think, worth our money.
And it was shaved down from the original dollars.
Yes, it's um, just really going to be a nice facility that they can grow into. Use it for the dog kennefack if they want to, for spring, you know, so use it as like a regional shop and bring some people in to do work and so it'll be, it'll be very nice. It's uh, uh, very good, so. Then uh, New Market Township, uh, actually I talked to all four of the townships about this broadband, um, you know, getting it. They've all got some money and really there's not a lot of places they can spend their money other than this broadband. And I, you know, maybe there's a few things with elections and a couple of other deals, but uh, if they want to get this, I look at the broadband kind of like um, electricity, you know, just maybe it might not be profitable. Um, and I serve on an electric board, but it might not be profitable to serve that guy out there, but everyone should be able to have electricity, water, you know, and these days broadband is almost an essential, you know, especially for school kids, you know, it's, that was, you know, electricity was city kids and country kids. You know, the city kids had electricity and the country kids did not, that, you know, there was a learning gap there. So, but broadband has uh, has become that, so. On the 13th, Planning and Zoning Met, um, had a couple of permits and they went through some things on the comm plan. Then on the uh, the 15th, I had just a meeting with Spring Lake Township on a couple of things they uh, are looking at doing. What else, on the 20th, uh, Credit River, um, they had some issues uh, related to some annexation, which kind of came to a, uh, prior, which came to the Prair Lake City Council Meeting last night, the 20th. They actually, they kind of made a little proposal about what's going on there in the builder and the, um, and the township spoke. I don't know if you watched it at all, Dave, but um, they tabled the decision until the next meeting to see what happened. And um, you know, it was funny afterwards, um, until then, there was another thing that went on, but afterwards, so the builders were at one side and the township was at the other talking and um, and they kind of all met um, in the middle and I was there and it was a little bit touchy at first, but I think at the end, um, I think they will come to a resolution. They're talking about putting in a high-end, like a storage place over there. Where people with way too much money can store their Corvettes and their big boats and it, I mean, these are like man caves on stairs. And I mean, these are like man caves on steroids, you know, that they can have parties and things. And I've never seen one. I guess that's only in my dreams, you know.
He's got two bays on order, but.
Yeah, no.
Brown's Corvettes.
But yeah, Corvette, yeah, I have a little tiny one, a hot wheel one. Anyhow, that was a buck fifty. Anyhow, so it's, you know, some of the neighbors did not want that there because maybe there's going to be some parties and some noise there. And my contention is, and my wife always says, careful what you wish for, you know. This might be better than door number two or what, seriously.
It's true. It is true. Yes.
That's just how it is, you know, so anyhow. So I think they will come to a resolution with that. So and I, and like Barb, lots of conversations about wearing masks, you know, the Renaissance Festival, a lot of things going on that. Here's what we should be doing and, you know, it's, and everyone's, I mean, there's, there's no real middle on some of this stuff. It's everyone should be doing this and everyone should or shouldn't have to do this. And, you know, but when it comes to that Renaissance or some of those, you know, I just look and I say, you know, let people open up and if people don't want to go, that's fine, you know, I think, you know, look at all the places that are open. I've had a tough time finding a place that Fleet Farm to park some days. It's like, you know, I think you got to live too. So that's my report.
Yeah, bizarre days for sure. Commissioner Ulrich, please.
Yeah, thank you. On the eighth, I attended MICA. And I'm going to start off with a little maybe a commentary. I'll put that next to my comments here. We had some discussion on police reforms. And obviously, there's needed reform in in the police departments, making sure that bad apples don't do terrible things and brutality and so forth and act racially unjust and so forth like that. But make no mistake about it, that law enforcement is under attack. And that's not a good thing. That's a, that's a terrible thing. I was talking to a police officer that doesn't live in Minnesota, doesn't work in Minnesota. And he described a situation where someone was coming to him with a baseball bat, you know, to attack him with a baseball bat. And he drew his pistol and thought to himself, if I shoot this person, I could be charged and most likely would be charged with a crime because he hasn't actually hit me with a baseball bat yet. And and that's a, that's a crazy thing. He went on to say that that serving as a police officer now is much more dangerous than when this was deployed in the Marines, over deployed overseas in the Marines. And and so I don't know where we're at with law enforcement. Well, we have to be very careful and protect law enforcement, support them, encourage them, come alongside them. We obviously need to support reforms. You know, I was happy to see some of the things that the Senate would not support in the reform bill. You know, they, they weren't going to support anything that defunded or dismantled police force. And they're, we're not going to support allowing convicted felons that are still incarcerated to to vote. They weren't going to allow the Attorney General to have independent jurisdiction to prosecute police. So I I'm looking forward to see what the final bill was there. But but I think we need to do everything we can to support law enforcement. With, at the same hand, cleaning up, you know, and getting rid of bad apples, too. So that's my commentary on that. On the ninth, we had our FISH meeting with the the chambers, most of the chambers in the county and most of the mayors met. And the question, the key question was, how can we better support our struggling businesses and our employees and so forth? So that was a very helpful talk. It was really fun to hear, see the administrator from Shakopee, Bill Reynolds, lavish praise for the county for the amount of money we're going to be distributing to the community, particularly local businesses. He, he just couldn't, couldn't stop being encouraging and talking about all that we're doing. And so the meeting really gave a greater awareness of our FISH network. On the thirteenth, I attended the Scott County Three Rivers Park Policy Committee. We talked about the twenty twenty one budget scenarios and how to address revenue declines. Later that same day, the Suburban Transit Authority Board Meeting. We were really divided into like four different subgroups, talking about service and metrics in one group and how to interact with legislators and engage them and educate them on the importance of the suburban transit providers. Also, the same kind of thing with another subgroup with a med council and then another subgroup with safety and and what kind of provisions are being made to provide safety to the traveling public that's using transit. Those are all four subgroups that we receive reports from and their ongoing work. July seventeenth, I attended the Greater MSP Board Meeting. We talked about the financials and deal flow and racial equity and emerging job challenge. It's just incredible what's happened to our jobs. The projections are that it'll take six and a half to eight years to recover the jobs that were lost as a result of the virus. We've lost between three hundred and fifty thousand and three hundred and seventy thousand jobs. And that's to compare with, since two thousand and ten, we created, the region created two hundred and ninety thousand jobs. So in ten years, that's the amount of jobs we created. And yet, in this short time, we've lost almost three hundred and seventy thousand jobs. And so that's more than we created in the last ten years. Just a terrible thing. July twentieth, the Service, Scott County Service Delivery Committee, we talked about the CARES Act funding, just like we did today. Talked about broadband extensions. And then we also heard reports on what everybody's doing with National, the Night to Unite. Some are not meeting, some are delaying till October, some are going on pretty much as planned with with safety and distancing. And that goes kind of measure Shakopee is doing that. They have about sixty groups that will be meeting for Night to Unite, but they'll be doing all the distancing, safety procedures. That's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My report starts, as many, well, all of ours, on the seventh, we had our CARES workshop. We had many discussions pre and post that, discussed it further today. On the eighth, also attended the MESB work, or not workshop, but meeting. And you kind of alluded to this a little bit, Commissioner Wolf. But there was a question asked about, there was a political ad with a nine one one and, you know, getting a message. And somebody, another commissioner, asked about that ad. Because there's a Minneapolis City Councilor on that MESB board. And he asked to say, hey, you know, if Minneapolis somehow looked at funding things differently, you know, would that really impact? Just use that ad as a catalyst. And I was kind of expecting a quick, oh, no, of course not. This, I mean, I didn't get that. I did not get that. It was a while, you know, there's a lot of discussion or conversation about some of the things they were thinking about and talking about, but never really squelched the idea that that would somehow impact. And I just thought that was interesting. I was not anticipating that. So I'm not, I don't remember what the, it was just a crazy ad about on being on hold or whatever for nine one one that, not saying that's imminent, but that is part of their discussion. They're a big part of that budget. So I just was not anticipating that slow, long, drawn out non-response. So it's something to keep our eyes on. Later that day, also had the White House Conference Call. I talked about one of the points on that about the, you know, not being able to buy down budgets. But also, that was the one Dr. Burks was on. And she talked about how outdoor dining with social distancing has been working. And I thought, that is awesome to at least hear some positivity. And then I thought, wait a minute, September, October, November, December is coming in Minnesota. So it was great to have the affirmation that that is working, in her words. Because she was on directly, not on Underling, but we're in Minnesota. So now what? That is working. On the thirteenth, Three Rivers Policy, we had a Zoom call on that day, the fourteenth, FISH program, program call, not not the actual program. On the fourteenth, Prior Lake, Spring Lake Watershed, they have been meeting in person. I was on the road, so I called in and like so many others, I've had a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails, a lot of conversations, to mask or not to mask. Wasn't that the words of the playwright? Also, lots of extension, you know, pros or different programs, you know, don't cut this or that. And I always retort back, and I do not mean this to be snarky at all, and I put that in there. But I don't care what the program is. When you're asking me, hey, don't cut this program, I also say, well, help me understand what programs I shouldn't cut. Because when you're for something, you're sort of against, I'm not necessarily against, but we have tricky decisions to make. And in bizarre days, so I just always ask that, help me understand why one over the other. And I get the extension. I get it. With that, that ends my report, so we will look to our county.
Mr. Chair, just you tap danced around like I, because that was a touchy situation on the MESB. I just, there was, because there's some former law enforcement people that are commissioners now.
Ah, oh, okay.
Anyhow, and then also I wanted to mention that meeting last night, Prior Lake City, the township, Chris Kostick, who was the board chair, was on vacation at Gaul Lake for a whole week. He actually drove back to be at that meeting and actually drove back up to be with his family. So I thought that was, that's a heck of a, you know, deal and that's commitment to the job. So just I want to mention that. So thank you.
It's good. Leslie?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of updates from some business operations. So the library yesterday opened up under the hybrid model. So people can come and browse during the hours that are posted on our website or at the library to go through the libraries. And then we still offer the curbside pickup and the computer appointments for folks that prefer that style or at risk for going out and being exposed.
And there's a lot to do, from what I understand. There's a lot that want to continue with that program.
I, like you, have heard many comments on why does the county not issue mask versus why does the county care about masks? So it, it's out there, both sides. I agree with you totally. The household hazardous waste, I just wanted to hit on that one as well. Right now, they're open about five hours more than they were pre-COVID for pickup. We are open out there on Wednesdays, Thursdays and Saturdays. Friday is pack up everything. You know, we've heard these complaints about solid waste or hazardous waste being dumped. But we actually go out and take a look at those. It's solid waste. It's mattresses, it's couches. Those would not go to the HHW anyway. It's a different type of thing that we're talking about. They are going to five minute appointments today.
Nice.
They're, they'll be at a hundred percent capacity. So you can help us here a little bit with the messaging on appointments. If you were to call Dakota right now, Kate and I had a long call, they have two hour waits. The people who are leaving our facility are pleased. They're calm. They're not agitated from sitting on trunk to Highway two eighty two or around the public works facility for two hours to get in. So while we're trying to catch up, we're actually also evaluating opening them up Tuesdays. Kate is working, you know, we've said we could prioritize a highway person, a facility person, our code influencer to help if we could open up for some Tuesday appointments. So she is working on that and scheduling it. So right now, as we get through these appointments, we're actually, the people that are going through the facility are having a better experience. It just is taking a while, right, to get through the backlog of some of these appointments? So we should be at a hundred percent capacity now, down to five minutes with a student opening and checking and allowing people through. You know, by the time they do it, they're pulling up, the other one's leaving, they're pulling up. It's, we're moving and we're moving people, but there is a lot out there that we need to catch up on, so.
And I'm just going to jump in if I may. I mean, that's always been a point of contention of sorts and moving to five minutes is a big deal. And I, again, just old story, helping a buddy bring a monster TV out there. I'm going to use a technical term here and it's four letters, so be careful, kids at home. The amount of crap that gets collected and the procedures that they have to do to pack that stuff up and dispose of it correctly, like that opened my eyes when I was there, you know, because when I was there, like, oh, come on, take a tour. And it's like, golly, it's more than just dropping off a computer screen or whatever. The things that we have to do to bundle it all all up to make sure it ships correctly is, that was eye opening to me. So sorry for that four letter word, but the five minutes thing will be a big deal, the possible another day. And the fact that we're open longer than we were, I didn't know that, so that was helpful to know. I mean, you told me a few days ago when I found that out. So that was, we're getting there, so thank you for your patience, folks.
Yeah, thank you. And actually, the appointment experience, when the people, it's good. They know when to come, they're there for a few minutes and they're gone. It's not a two hour sit in traffic. Right now, we have elections out at that. We have a lot of rock hauling going on. So to wind people even through there becomes an issue with all the traffic going on out there. And so that they come up, they can pull up to that gate and enter, it is a much better experience for all right now. And I know we just are asking folks to be patient, wait for that appointment. We have very few no shows. When people are scheduling even a month out, they are showing up for their appointments, so.
And there are other places to put paint.
Yep. And I think it's important to know that everything, there's other places for everything. It's just usually you have to pay. Talking about levy and cuts and money, the more people that use a service, the more it costs all of us and and taxpayers. So again, the more people we get through there, the bigger the expense is. Because we pay more to get rid of that stuff than a person pays to drop off. So I think, I think we need a good balance there. And if it's full, if the, if the whole back is full, we can't have more people drop more stuff off because we only have that much capacity to get it and they only pick up when they pick up. So it, again, a little more complicated than some people think. And I, I think when I've explained to people that we can only have so many semi trucks of TVs and computers and things like that on on Friday for pickup, you know, and we, we're kind of the mercy of those outfits to pick us up, too. That's some of it. It's not just that we're scared to open or something. It's a much more complicated system. And it costs taxpayer money. The more people that go through there, the more that budget's going to be. So that's, that's a choice that we're going to be making.
And the other one with those staff is we have about two and a half times the septic inspections this year that we had last year because of the weather. So it's a balance of all of these staff and trying to meet it. We are, the other question that came up that is the well tests. And so that is being opened up again now where we can mail out the bottle, they can drop it off there. I believe it's Wednesdays, but they'll find out when they go to do the process because those have to be refrigerated until the time they're picked up. But that is another service that's coming and there'll be information on that on our website, where they can talk to somebody in environmental health.
Which, if I get this right, you know, we have so many things that we're mandated to do. The state says, you must do this or else. This is not, the well testing at least, certainly, that part of it is not.
Correct. That's more of a courtesy service that we provide. It's not a mandate of the county. Now, it is good information to have that our wells are healthy.
Yes.
And I think the gentleman that raised it is a foster care provider. And so they do need to do a well test to meet that. But again, I think Ms. Selvig indicated that, you know, they're working with them because the whole world's a little crazy right now, right? To make sure that they can do the testing and that it would be adequate on that type of a timeframe, so.
And on the HHW, I mean, like, you know, when we take a road trip, we don't know we're leaving until the day before, just for a lot of different reasons. You should try it. It's a lot of fun. But to that extent, if I got a garage full of stuff, like, I don't want to schedule something a month out. Like, I get that, but at the same time, I do not want to wait in line for two hours either.
Right.
So it's that balance of, and it's sunny out and I'm sitting in a car and for two hours, that doesn't sound like fun. Maybe in my old age, I'm mellowing a little bit to be like, all right, maybe I'll plan for a stop. So there's pros and cons with that and we're figuring it out along the way. The five minutes will be awesome. So thanks for doing that.
Yeah, it will help with the capacity.
And so will those come on the calendar today?
I'm not sure the day they were coming out, but we should.
I got to get an appointment, you know.
Yeah.
You should see the ditch by your house. Unbelievable.
Okay, so then the last item under my update is I'm going to ask Lisa to update you on some of the COVID facts. We had a request for that after the agenda went out. So instead of a formal item, she's going to just update you on some of that information.
Awesome. Wait, wait, you're coming with answers today? Not, not that you didn't before, not that, just, that's more than just the COVID. COVID's so hard to get answers on. I want to be very specific. That was not against you. It's just.
I have answers, Commissioner Beer, but they might change tomorrow.
I know. Well, that's a long shelf life.
It is definitely a crazy time.
Yes.
So good morning, Commissioners. I'm just going to provide just a brief update on some data, give it some context for you and also maybe do a little bit of myth busting this morning, just a few minutes of your time. And as always, please feel free to ask questions and if I can't answer something, I'll, I'll, I'll get back to you on those.
Thank you.
I did provide you with the most updated surveillance report as of last night. We have one thousand and forty six Scott County residents that have tested positive. And just for clarification, these are people who have gone in, had a COVID test and are positive. This does not include an antibody test, which actually, right now, according to mail or my last conversation with them, that really isn't widely available yet. So these are people that have tested positive.
Lisa, any idea how many tests we've done? Is it, the state seems you're running around five percent. So is it about twenty times that number that have been tested?
So I, we don't have access to that yet as far as number of tests. Correct. Statewide, we have, they've done eight hundred and sixty seven thousand, four hundred and ten tests. That is not necessarily equate to the same number of people because you may have more than one test. You may test negative twice and then test positive. So as of Monday, however, we do have a little bit of access to more data and we are going to start doing community tests. And we are gonna start um doing uh community testing on Friday. Our first clinic is uh this Friday. Um at uh Canterbury Park in the parking lot. This is in partnership with the Department of Health, Shakopee, Midwakan and Sioux. And Canterbury. Um they're letting us use their space. And that's from two thirty to seven thirty. So next time I come, I'll be able, or even sooner, be able to tell you, out of those one thousand or so tests that we're going to do, how many were positive. So now that we're gonna be doing that, um we'll have some of that data for you.
Nice partnership. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, when will they get those test results, those people? Will they wait or do they gotta wait for an email or a call?
Um so are the system that we're using that belongs to uh Primary Bio, we're getting to use it for um no cost through the state. If they're negative, they will get a an immediate um text and let them know immediately. However, because of some of our capabilities have been sent down to more of the southern states, there is a bit of a delay in test results now. It's taking like oh, seven to eight days. So hopefully, um we are using Mayo Lab, I believe, during our testing and that should speed it up. Um but uh so they'll get a text if they're negative and then we'll follow up on the positive cases, like we are continuing to do with our case investigation.
And what what test are we using? Is it the?
We're not using the one that goes right up into your nose into the brain. It's more of a halfway one. It's still, it's still not comfortable, but um the one that we're doing this Friday, people are gonna drive up. They're gonna stay in their cars. We have community paramedics that we're partnering with um through Goosebusters and they'll be doing the swabs. Um we have volunteers. We have uh people are coming from um River Valley Nursing is letting us use one of their nurses. So it's a really good partnership and the state is providing some staff and some tents. I uh if you want to come get tested, please feel free to do so. Or or drop by and just to see the operation. Um we'll have the capability to up to a thousand.
In the day and time, again, just for clarity?
Two thirty to seven thirty. And we're right next to the Expo Center. You'll see really giant, big white tents.
In the day?
Friday, the twenty-fourth.
Awesome.
This Friday.
I did, Lisa, you know, that thing you talked about going all the way up their nose and it comes, you know, down through your ears. If if we have to wear a mask to cover our mouth, why can't they just like check your mouth for the?
There is a throat culture now. We don't have access to that at this time.
You can't just do your tongue or something like that. I'm just, I'm just asking dumb question. I don't know.
You know, um there is a test also where you can cough and it's it's sputum based.
Okay.
So you have to have enough stuff to test.
Yeah, I mean, part of part of the question is like, I don't want to scare people away, so I don't want to ask too many questions. But so so the one. It it, so it's just kind of going halfway up the nasal, whatever?
It's a lot easier, the one that we're gonna be doing.
And so it's not like a strep test we all know and love, you know, where they're.
So how long is it? Is it?
Can it's long or is it just long? Can I let you know next week? Because I might get tested and then I'll be able to testify exactly how easy um it was. So I hate to give false information.
No, I know, I know. That's, yeah, probably not. We don't want too much on that, probably.
It is, it is up the nose.
But it's effective. It's an effective test. Yeah, okay, good, thanks.
So of, I just want to also clarify, of those one thousand people, there's been some, or one thousand forty-six that we have in our county. I've heard some myths that we are double counting or adding numbers. Uh the process, I want to let you know. We get our numbers as direct download from the state. I am intimately familiar with those. I can see clearly, I see one thousand forty-six unique names, unique birthdates, unique addresses. These are folks that aren't double counted. Even if they had a second test, which most people, when they have a positive test, like it's when you're looking for something, once you find it, you don't continue. Even if they tested positive, their names are only in our database one time. Um so just to, hopefully, hopefully that will put that to rest.
Well, and we didn't always have that information, did we? At at the county, I mean, the county didn't?
We didn't have as much information as we have now.
Which is obviously still private, but um so at least we have a better, we can say with with authority that, hey, we see this. It's not, I mean, I haven't heard the double counting, but maybe it's out there, but.
Right. So even if they, yeah, I'm sorry. Um even if they had a strep culture and a nasal culture, which I I don't see very many people doing that. They're still positive. It's it's one time that we're counting. So, because I I just, I only can speak with the database that I look at. Because I don't have access to the whole state, but I'm I'm very certain that that's the case everywhere.
So a quick question, sorry, because I mean, there's so many questions with us. Um so the, are are people getting the strep force? I'm gonna ask a dumb, another dumb question, for strep, or is that somehow do they use that in conjunction with?
So I I think I said strep culture, but I meant throat culture.
Okay, okay, okay.
But they are also, in some cases, because of the sore throat, they may get a strep culture and a covid test. And it could be very similar.
But but the but the throat culture, again, just so they're looking for covid in that case?
Yes, there's two, they're two separate tests.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
Um so I also want to talk a little bit about some of the death data. Um and and give some context. Um we, um as of March, or pardon me, from March first to July seventh. So right now, we have, um as of July seventh, in the death data, we have five deaths listed. However, since that time, we've had additional three deaths. Death data is a little bit behind. And there are some differences in that data. We get the data from our system based on where they were living at that time. And death data is based on your permanent address. So sometimes if we report six. But it may not be the same in the actual death data that's listed. I've also heard some myths that the hospitals are listing everyone as dying from covid, no matter what they die from. So and in in order to get money or something, I I don't believe that's happening. Um these are based on people's licenses. But just to check, I went into the death data and we did some analysis and found some interesting um information and context for you. Um so what we did was look at March first through July seventh, because that's the latest data that we have. So in the death files, we have five people dying from covid. Um so you get an underlying health condition, that's your primary cause of death. And then you have some secondary causes that are listed as proximate. So you may have nine or ten proximate, proximate. Reasons for death. So it might be drug overdose and then suicide as approximate. So in the data, excuse me. I looked at those dates and compared to how many people died in twenty nineteen. So we should see similar patterns. And if hospitals were making everybody, listing everybody as covid, we would see a lot less death for other reasons. So in the same period in twenty nineteen, we had two hundred and seventy-seven deaths compared to two hundred and sixty-six deaths this year. Obviously, we had no deaths last year from covid. Um but um we had uh more deaths in that period overall. However, um looking at the approximate cases, we had five listed as covid. And in all of those other deaths that weren't covid. There was not one mention of covid as approximate. Or a secondary. So covid is not listed anywhere. The other piece too, even though we had more deaths in the same period in twenty nineteen, heart disease deaths are up. Suicide deaths are up and so are drug overdoses. Now, I can't say that is covid related. Um I'm, we actually could spend the next ten years again analyzing this data.
And probably will.
It could be. It could be from increased stress. I don't know. But if that myth that everyone was coding, making everybody dying from covid. We would see all of those things going down instead of up. Now, again, just, I want to say this is Scott County data only. But two hundred and seventy-seven, two hundred and sixty-six, that's enough to see any kind of trends.
In Scott County, there'd be only two places to die in a hospital, wouldn't there? Uh New Prague and Shakopee.
And Shakopee. So um interestingly, we also ran some deaths. About twenty-five percent of our deaths in twenty twenty died in hospital. In inpatient, about a little under two percent were in the ER. Uh thirty-seven percent were in the home. And this is overall. Um two percent in hospice, about twenty-eight percent in long-term care. And for some context, that's down from the year before. The year before was thirty-one percent.
So I I think that's really important and let's repeat it because I I think whenever I hear that myth of people saying, it's the same amount of people. Dying, we're just, we're just saying they're dying of covid. I'd say, you know, so I think this really shows, again, at least for Scott County. There's more people dying. There's more people dying of heart disease and then this covid is additional people. And I think just in a good service, I mean, I I don't work with hospitals outside of this county, but I work with our two good hospitals here. And I didn't believe they're doing fishy things. And I think this proves they're not doing fishy things. If we look at those death certificates. And whether people die in a hospital or at home, there's a cause of death. And if if it's not known, there's an autopsy, there's an investigation. That's why some people end up waiting for death certificates a couple of weeks. So I think that's a really important message to get out there is. We checked, you know, because we're hearing these concerns. So we checked and somebody who has access to the death data. And those death certificates did. And so I think we can go out there and say that now. I mean, before that, I was supposing it and hoping it was true. But this is really important and I hope um everybody who hears this can spread that word. Because it it doesn't do good service to our good friends at St. Francis or Queen of Peace for that to keep happening.
I mean, part of the issue, just in general, and I think I said the same thing the last time around, I mean, we're all, not just us. But we're all clamoring for some sort of certainty to hold on to, which in this life we find more and more fleeting, seeing that there really is very little. So I I've never, just dovetailing on that, I've never had a whiff, a hint, uh wait, did I hear that right? Did someone say that the county somehow, um or really any organization in the county is trying to cook the books on this? I like, I've never had that sense or that gut feel that that, oh, I don't know if Lisa, I I've I've never. Um felt that. Now, we live in a sea of information. Some of it may be good, some of it may be bad. Well, we know, you know, it's a lot of both. So I think part of it is just, you know, we want to be able to make some concrete decisions on. No concrete, real, resolute answers. So that that's part of the, but I just, I I again, I I do think that that, I've never had the feeling. And I don't think anyone has had that somehow we're trying to make this look a certain way or any of the hospitals are trying to make it look a certain way. But it is, and I think part of the questioning this time and last time is, we just trying to, we're looking to you for the for the source of this information. To try to get the right intel out to people.
Exactly. That's what it is.
So that we can, here's the actionable information we have today, which is old information by a week or two, but tomorrow it'll be. I mean, the shelf life of this stuff is unbelievable. Um which makes some of it unbelievable. So the more truth, more, you know, diving into this, appreciate that work. The the more diving into that so that we can tell the proper story as we know it. Um which is really the only thing we can do, I think is really, really important. And in a sea of. Whew, crazy information, a little bit of bright light when we can get it is helpful. So thank you for that.
Uh thank you, Commissioner Beer. Um so yeah, you know, we, I look at the data all the time. I love the data. I like looking at trends because it informs us and it informs us of what we want to tell our people, our community. And so they can make choices for themselves of what they know to be safe or not safe. Um we do see some trends. Um you'll see on the surveillance tool, it's clear by tracking the numbers that we're in the second wave. We had a wave, it went like this. Our cases went up, they went down. And now we have another big peak, which is higher than the previous peak. We are seeing, you know, our cases went up by a a lot of cases last week, a little bit less this week, about a hundred and twenty-two new cases. Um so you can see that that second wave. A lot of those cases are connected to, you know, it's it's summertime, people are out. Um we have several outbreaks um in some of the hospitality industry. Uh we're working closely with employers to try and get in front of those. Um and uh you know, teaching safe cleaning procedures, when should, when should servers be wearing a mask, um et cetera, et cetera. So.
Mr. Chair, Lisa, um back in March, when we started with the shutdowns and we, you know, we got to flatten the curve, save the hospitals, all that. One of the nostrums that was coming out at the time was, if we can just get till summer, because the flu doesn't like heat and humidity. And here we are in summer and it seems to be not obeying the expectation. Does, did the the observational science change or um is there something we're missing here? Because usually the common cold, you know, we all get it in January, February, or again, just before Christmas when it's most helpful. But in the summer, few people ever get a summer cold, uh because of the sunlight, the heat, the humidity, things like that. Any observations on that? What are we seeing here with this spike?
Uh well, Commissioner Beard, I I think the original looking, you know, looking at some of the predictions. Minnesota Department of Health in partnership with the University of Minnesota did predict that we would have a second wave in the summer. Those in public health, um I I personally didn't believe that it was gonna go away in the summer because of the heat. We know that kids are out of school and they they're cavorting more. Um we had uh graduation with a lot of people getting together and we are slowly opening up. Places where there's a lot of direct contact. Um they are seeing a reduction in, you know, with outdoor spaces at restaurants. But it's been ungodly hot this last week. And so nobody's sitting on a patio in a hundred degrees. So there's a lot more people in those bars and restaurants because they have less space. Um you know, look at, if you look at some of the beaches, people are packed in there. Um very, very closely. There are, there really, that six foot social distancing isn't happening unfortunately. Uh so if people, you know, given all things considered, you know, wearing your mask, trying to stay six feet. I think we would probably see more of a reduction than we're seeing now. Um but that's, that's just the reality. That that some of those rules aren't being followed. Um we have, you know, we have people getting together and they parties. I get calls a lot. Every, you know, every day I receive a call. I was at a graduation party or I was at this restaurant and or bar. We were really crammed in there. My friend just called me. They now have covid or, you know, so. It's hard to get people to really follow what they're supposed to be doing or what they're, what they recommend, I should say, what the recommendations are. And uh that's, those are a lot of the cases that we're seeing today.
So sunlight and heat has not had a, it's not had anything to do with the virus itself. It doesn't seem to be knocking it down.
I I'm not sure we know or don't know that yet.
Okay.
Um I think being outside in open spaces a lot, you know, in open wide space away from people is probably healthier than being crammed inside to a space. Um but if it really, a lot of it is just depends. And I can pull some of that scientific evidence. But if you're, you know, looking at um an event we were talking about recently, if you're gonna put thirty thousand people in one space. There's just no way you can appropriately social distance in that type of environment. And if you look at the data, going back to the data, we know that out of those one thousand forty-six Scott County residents. Seven percent of them have reported that they were asymptomatic. So they didn't feel, they didn't have any symptoms, but they turned out positive. So they're out and about and they could give it to somebody prior to, you know, up to two days earlier. Or they might not be symptomatic, but they could spread it to others. So that's all, you know, you've got to add all that into the crazy equation that we have.
Did you say seven or seventy?
Seven percent.
Only seven, okay.
Only, only seven percent, but you know, it's two sides of the same coin. I'm glad that there's seven percent of folks that are getting this and hopefully recovering. Without any um long-term effects. But that's also, you know, we're told stay home if you're sick and they're not sick. So they're going out and they're interacting unknowingly that they could be spreading the virus. So.
And are they getting tested because like most of the time they, oh, I was exposed or if, because if they're asymptomatic? What what's bringing them in most of the time? They're at an establishment or have heard something or?
Mm-hmm. All of the above. Uh there may be somebody living in the household that is positive. They may have a coworker that was positive and their employee call, employer called them and said, you need to go get tested. Because so and so was sick and you were working closely with them. They may have participated in a large gathering of some sort. Um so those are the people that um usually fall under those, recommended to be tested.
So with the asymptomatic folks, um this is maybe a myth, and I don't know if you have the information on this. And I don't know where I, if it was news, which, you know, put it all in one group, you don't really know until it's science. But do they, they still, they're carriers, obviously, because they're testing positive. Are they, do we know if they're more or less likely to, you know, um, we know they're carriers, but are they spreaders of it? Because I I think I'd heard that. I don't remember where. So that's why I want to, that that asymptomatic maybe aren't as likely to spread as first thought. Do we know anything more on that at all?
We think they are.
Think they are less likely?
Uh I don't, wouldn't say less likely, but there's, we think that they're able to.
To spread it.
Scientists, the science is saying that they're able to spread it.
Alright, that's that's, I was just curious because I don't remember where I heard it and I thought we have it here, so.
There's caffeine less, so maybe they spread it less.
Yeah, maybe.
And there's that. Again, if they're not coughing into the air, you know, they're they're probably likely to spread it. But it's less likely to spread it. But that also goes to another myth that I wanted to talk a little bit about. Is that kids, you know, we keep hearing, you know, kids, they're not affected, so there's no problem here. Well, they they may not be as sick, they may be asymptomatic, but they can spread it. They can spread it to their parents, their teachers, their grandparents, et cetera. And they also can get sick. We know kids have died. Not in Scott County, thank goodness, but we know children have died from this. And again, it's not just a zero sum game. It's you're, if you don't die, you're fine. You're gonna recover and you're gonna be fine. We have people that have lifelong. We have people that have lifelong debilitating effects from this, that isn't talked about much. It could, impaired lung function, they could have breathing problems for the rest of their lives. It could lead to organ damage, heart, kidneys, brain issues. So we know it's not just a matter of you either die or you don't. So, you know, I, we were speaking to someone the other day whose young daughter, I think 20 years old, was sick, was in the hospital for three weeks. She is going to have lung and breathing impairment for the rest of her life because of the scar tissue that resulted from that. So important to remember, kids can get sick, kids can spread it to others, even if they're not terribly, terribly sick.
Quick question on that and I'm by no means trying to minimize this, um, but these long-term effects, like do we have more data on that, that, it's like some people take Advil or whatever and they can have adverse reaction, where I take it and it's fine? Like, is, is there a, I don't want to say pre-existing condition, but a, obviously that doesn't impact everybody, right? That, that type of long-term effect?
I could look for the data on that.
I'm just, I'm just trying to, because that, you know.
I think we're just collecting that.
Yeah. I know it's so much of this is.
Yeah, I think, yeah. I think when all is said and done, once we get vaccine, we can go and look back at some of this data and try and figure out, was there a correlation between the outcome of this case compared to the outcome of this case? Right now, that data's, that's, that's still out there.
I sort of figured, but I had to ask it, is, you know, trying to get as much information as possible.
I can tell you, out of our eight deaths, seven of those did have underlying health conditions. I think that was a question the other day. And the average age was about 83.
Yeah, not that it makes any deaf like, oh, okay, um, death is death, eternity sealed, so, um, but it's helpful information.
The last myth I want to talk about is that masks cause CO2 poisoning. So I've been wearing my mask, I just took it off to speak here, been wearing it all morning, I feel okay. These are not airtight masks. You know, I, I wear mine all the time, I have no problem breathing, there's lots of air flowing in and out. You know, it kind of reminds me of when I was a kid growing up in Canada, when it was minus 40, my mom would take a long scarf and she'd roll it around my head and all I could see was this. I actually had more trouble breathing then than I do with my mask on. You, you had to, you just exposed skin, freeze, you know, froze in less than 30 seconds.
Which I just want to say that now answers my question, why you always end your, your questions with a.
Oh, sorry, it, it might have leaked out. I've been, been talking to a lot of my Canadian relatives lately, because they, I can't go back home right now, so the border's still closed. Apparently, they don't want Americans in Canada. So, at the moment.
I've been through Canada twice in the last five weeks. I do have to promise to the guard at Roseau that I'm not going to stop even to pee. I have to go straight through. I'm partying.
Well, that's good to know.
But I, I have an essential to employees.
Oh, I'm like, how do you? Excellent, excellent.
You got a little special car, huh?
I do, yes. Please don't stop. What do I have to pee? Don't. He said, you can make it, it's only 55 minutes.
Do not take any Tupperware from the Beard family for that.
But it is, they've shut everything down and they've said now it will probably be till the end of the year. It's, uh, it's killing them up there.
There are very few cases out there. So in reality, it's, it's not. So anyway, the.
I used a figure of speech.
So the cloth mask, anyway, it, it does provide a lot of airflow. There is no evidence that it causes CO2 poisoning. Surgeons wear face masks all day, most of their day, they're wearing a face mask, even an N95 allows for airflow. So I just wanted to say, you know, there really is no evidence that it's going to cause CO2 poisoning, death. I've been reading a lot of, and I get that question a lot, all the time. You know, it really, there really is no evidence that it endangers people's health.
Lisa, the other one I've been hearing lately is wearing the mask all day makes you more susceptible to bacterial infections. I've actually heard some hairdressers talk about this, so any thoughts on that?
I have not heard that one yet. I would say if your mask gets wet, you should wash it and clean it. I just got certified in mold, more than I wanted to know about mold. But if it was moldy and you were breathing it in, I would say that probably is a problem and same if you have a CPAP and you're breathing in that, breathing in mold. So I would say keep your mask clean, change it if it gets wet. You know, those are the recommendations. I have not heard, I, I can look into that about the bacteria.
Just throwing that out, that's the one I heard this week, so.
That is a new one.
The, the one that's really easy to, to breathe through is that disposable paper one I've been carrying around for the last three months, in and out of my pocket, in and out of my pockets, it's got a big hole in it. Kidding, I'm kidding. Now, I did wear a mask. I, I, I do, I do prefer not to wear a mask, but I wore a mask in and out of the building. My freedoms are still intact so far and I am watching them, my freedoms, believe me. I'm watching my freedoms big time. But I did wear it in and out of the building, into this workspace where we've all worked together. I will wear it out of the building.
So are we through with the public health update?
I just wanted to say one other thing. If you look at the trends, you'll see that where we, at the beginning, we hardly had any kids, almost zero. And that, that has been steadily, gradually increasing as the weather has gotten warmer. I think we're almost up to, not, almost up to 10% of our cases have been under, under 21. Or I think it's zero to 18. So we really need to watch that carefully. And originally, we had almost 90% of those have been in the, in the state that have been dying, have been older. That has now dramatically dropped, it's at about 70, 77, 78%. So as more people in the younger generations are getting sick, those trends, it's skewing more so to the left instead of to the right.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, um, I had a question, but it's not that big of a deal. The biggest thing is, like, when you come, like, we have all this, like, we're clamoring for this information. So it's not a, um, I hope it doesn't come across in any certain way that we're coming at you, just like you are the, the bearer of good news? At least answers?
I, I wish I was the bearer of good news.
News, just news, just news. The bearer of news. We're just, we're so clamoring for the good news, that's why you get so many questions.
And I think it's important to share with Lisa what we're hearing so that she can bring back.
Yep.
The information. I mean, I, I think that's what we're doing, the things we're hearing.
Yep.
Because I'm not a scientist, I'm not a public health expert, here's what I'm hearing. Come back and tell us, you know, some more information about this. So again, I appreciate that. We're, we're just trying to keep that dialogue going and, and do our job in paying attention.
Yep. And we, we do that, but this is a forum in which the public can see that we have these exchanges as well, that, that we're not just waiting for, you know, once a month to have